Can we have a roll call? Roll call, please. Here. Angela Wilcox. Here. Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Here.
Erin Chan Ding.
Here.
Katie Carum.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here.
All right. Can we stand in? Do you have a public comment?
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a little bit different order in the agenda today because we are starting with a public hearing on our tentative budget. So why don't we get started with that since we are doing that at 7:00?
Dr. Vine, you want to give us just a high level?
We have a roll call.
Oh, sorry. My apologies.
I'm sorry. We need a motion to go into the public. So moved.
Second.
With a roll call? Yes. Steve Wang.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Thank you, board members. There's the tentative budget was presented to you at a previous board meeting. There's one change that I'm anticipating it will make, and you'll hear a little bit more about that at the during the Finance Committee report. But that would actually be a change that would redirect DESEV proceeds into operating funds. So it would change the projected surplus from approximately $141,000 to approximately 2.4 million. And that preserves the opportunity for the board to make decisions around DESEV at a future point in time and still leave the district looking with a potentially positive surplus if that, in fact, does not happen. But there's more to come on that from the Finance Committee report. But that would be the only change that would be contemplated between the tentative and final that I would anticipate bringing for you at the next meeting.
So why are you moving it to operating, though? Just so there's flexibility with its utilization?
That's correct. And it actually, it sort of evens out the performance over the course of the two years. Allows stability, much more stability in terms of fund balance percentage year over year. And seems to make sense as a, with the sort of the same logic that we used last year, that with one more unusual year under our belt, that the same practice seemed to make sense as we rolled into this year's budget. But I wouldn't anticipate a recommendation like this in future years.
Okay, good. All right. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion to close.
Is there public comments?
Is there any public comments? Sorry, on the hearing. Is there a public comment on the hearing? I don't think anyone signed up for that topic. Okay, so we'll call public comment closed. So we have a motion to close the hearing? So moved. Second. Roll call. Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Okay, the hearing is closed. Now we will proceed with our regular agenda. Thank you for your patience, because I stumbled through that. First up, we have a report from Sarah.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sarah Baurnfrin, and I am a junior at the high school this year. So first off, we had our first school assembly on the second Friday of school. It felt so awesome to have the whole school together again, and it was a really positive way to kick off the school year. And we were able to highlight some of our sports teams and clubs, which was great. And then we also had our first two home football games. And there were a lot of students that came to show their support for Barrington. And it was great to see such school spirit throughout the whole student body. The stands were packed with red on that first game, and it felt great to be back after two years. Walking through the hallways, you can really feel the positive energy and school spirit. And I think as a student body, we're really appreciative to be back in the building. And even though some students don't enjoy wearing masks necessarily, I think we, as a student body, are just so appreciative to be back that we'll do whatever it takes to be in the building. And teachers are definitely enforcing mask rules in a positive way. So Student Council is planning our 2021 homecoming events, which is really exciting. The theme this year is around the world. So we're going to be highlighting different cultures and languages, which is really unique compared to what they've done in past years. We have a lot of fun plans for the assembly, parade, Philly football, and especially the dance. And we're really looking forward to hosting all these traditional events that haven't happened in a while. Thank you.
Thank you. I suppose since Sarah's been with us, so.
Yeah, I would just say, being you, Sarah, having a student representative is a great piece for the Board of Education to hear from the student perspective and ask questions. So thank you for serving as that representative. By the looks of what was provided to me, you've been in Barrington for a long time, going to Grove and Prairie and very involved in the high schools with BHS TV. So we really appreciate your insight and did a great job tonight. So thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments for Sarah?
Thank you for sharing enthusiasm. It's great to hear that kids are happy to be back and involved in things and stuff's happening.
Excellent. Well, you're welcome to stay, but understand that if you need to take it going.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so next up, then, is my report. And I'm going to start out with a couple logistics. As everyone is aware, universal masking is required for this meeting, and we'll be monitoring. I think we won't have any problem. I appreciate everybody coming in and adhering to that rule. Should we have any issues, and we may need to go to virtual meeting, and if we do need to recess and go to virtual meeting, I'll give you the details on that should that need to occur. We'll find another way for public comment. I'm going to welcome everybody back to the Admin Center. We haven't been here in a couple months now, it feels like. So welcome back. Appreciate that. I know you're going to hear reports from the administration on how school has started. You already heard from Sarah. Again, it's a great report. Back-to-school nights are underway, so things are going pretty well. Today, the board actually met for the last three hours, actually, we've been together, and we did a workshop. And I just wanted to share what the board asked me to share. One of the things we covered was the eight pillars of trust, and I'm just going to read them to you. We also reviewed our board protocols, which we'll be voting on at the next meeting, as well as taking the time to sit back and do an evaluation on ourselves. So one of the things that we all wanted to make sure that I mentioned was that we discussed these eight pillars of trust, which are clarity, people trusting clear and mistrust the ambiguous, compassion, people put faith in those that care beyond themselves, character, people notice those who do what is right over what is easy, competency, people have confidence in those who stay fresh, relevant, and capable, commitment, people believe in those who stand through adversity, connection, people want to follow and be around friends, contribution, people immediately respond to results, and consistency, people love to see little things done consistently. So we talked through these and about our behavior at the board table and wanted to share with the community that we're going to work together to build and expand upon these pillars of trust. We've had a couple other events that have occurred over the past couple of weeks. We had the grand opening celebration of the Boys and Girls Club in Dundee that a few of our board members were able to attend, and they may want to report on that as we get to our committees and events reporting. We also had some board members attend the IASB webinar on CRT. I just wanted to remind the board that there are often webinars that are available for us, so you can go ahead and sign up for them. But I think we'll hear a little bit more about that one again during the committee reports. The Ed Redd luncheon is later this month, so I wanted to remind the board that if you're intending to go, please get your reservation into Janine, or you can submit it yourselves. But we need to know pretty soon. And then I want to pay for that, so please send it to me. So get that to Janine. You're also going to hear about this in a minute, so I'm going to steal some of your thunder. But we will be, on Friday night, we're going to have a media event because we're going to be opening up our 9/11 display. So a huge thank you to Steve McWilliams that's helping us bring the work of Gary Sisson, who's a Barrington High School alum, to our community. He, if you remember, we've talked about him before. We have, he had unrestricted access as the official photographer at Ground Zero for the Uniformed Firefighters Association. And the display is going to be available starting September 10th through Thanksgiving, and we're going to have opportunities for the public to view it as well. So it's pretty exciting that we're able to have this display commemorating the 20th anniversary of 9/11. Very unique to Barrington. So appreciate all the work, Steve, that you put in, as well as the donation from Gary Sisson. You'll continue to hear throughout this meeting that we are keeping our top priorities are to keep our schools open and in person. So you'll continue to hear from us about that. And this evening, as we go into public comment, as you may have read on the meeting notes, we're going to keep, one thing we agreed upon at the board is that we've got, if we have more than 20 members wanting to speak, then we'll reduce the amount of time to two minutes. But we have far less than 20 tonight, so we won't have to exercise that. Everyone will be keeping two to three minutes. You'll all get three minutes. Okay, so that's it from my report. So let me open up for public comment. Boy, we've got a lot to read. We've now come to a portion of our meeting. We set a set time for public comment. We really do value your thoughts and opinions, and in accordance with board policy, we ask you to state your name, your elementary attendance area, or relationship to the district before you begin your comments. We ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, and Janine is going to have a countdown timer, as we've had in the past, and a bell. Again, we want to make sure the board's business is not impacted, and we want to ensure that all voices are respected and heard in accordance with our board equity statement that states that we recognize, embrace, and defend the identities, abilities, and voices of our diverse school community. And per our board policy, 830 visitors to and conduct on school property, we state that the school district expects mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among all people on school property. And no person shall strike, injure, threaten, harass, or intimidate staff members, board members, sports officials, coaches, or any other person. No person shall impede, delay, disrupt, or otherwise interfere with any school activity or function. All in attendance must be respectful of each other and allow the board to dialogue appropriately. We commit to addressing the issues and not attacking people, and we ask that you do likewise. If we experience continued disruption, then offenders will be asked to leave and escorted out as necessary. We will call, as I mentioned before, we'll call for resource if we're unable to conduct our business. And in order to allow as many people to speak as possible, if someone else has spoken, represented your views, please feel free to stand and show your support. And as a reminder, public comment is not a conversation. If any comments require further attention, we will ask Dr. Hunt to follow up and report back to the board. Okay, so with that being said, let's go ahead and open the public comment. First up is Jerry Ewald.
Thank you, guys. So my name's Jerry Ewald. I have three kids in the 220 system. I had a senior last year who's graduated. I'm a trained biomedical engineer from University of Illinois, and I'm also currently a healthcare executive that submitted many medical devices for approval to the FDA. So I give you a little bit of that background because I hear things are going great at the beginning of the year, and I just wanted to kind of bring your attention to, I think, something that may be an issue as we go through the year, and that's shield testing. Right? So the PCR testing used in SHIELD is approved for emergency use only, right? So I think we all know that. And as someone working with the, or worked with the FDA quite a bit, emergency use authorization means that the safety and efficacy of that medical device or diagnostic has not been fully tested, right? It's kind of like a use at your own risk kind of thing, right? So when we look at requiring our staff and students to test once a week, we're automatically opted in when we do this. We have to follow a two-step process to get them out, to opt out. Some people don't know how to do that. I know it's an option, but we're all opted in, if you will. So if you look at the amount of students in 220, right, so that's 9,100 on the website, and then you look at the SHIELD's own admissions of the false positives, and false positives means you test positive for COVID, but you don't actually have it, it's 1.1%. Now, it sounds small, but when you start applying it to those numbers, right, you look at a student population of 9,100, that's roughly 100 false positives a week. So that's, again, assuming people didn't opt out. I know some people have, but that's 100 false positives a week. And having roughly 40 weeks in a school year, that leaves us with 4,000, the potential, again, 4,000 students that will have a false positive throughout the year. All right? So thinking about that, that's 44% of the student population, right? Again, that's the worst-case scenario. So you can run different analysis to kind of see where that's at, but it's 44% that could be falsely quarantined. If a student with a false positive has to quarantine, they must do so for seven to 14 days, depending on the option in the SHIELD program. That means up to 44% of our students will miss one to two weeks of class even though they don't have COVID. Now, I just talked about the students. What happens if this is a teacher, right, that has this problem, right? The whole class suffers. So here's the problem, right? We're mass testing asymptomatic people. This is typically not done, and we know that they're asymptomatic because they don't have symptoms. If they do have symptoms, they stay home, right? So even a small degree of error, that 1.1%, could have a major impact on our students and their ability to receive education. So here's the bottom line. Our kids are test subjects for an emergency use diagnostic. Not only will a significant amount of students that are not sick at all miss up to two weeks of class, but it's also estimated that the SHIELD testing in 220 alone will cost anywhere between seven to 11 million. Yeah, one more. And that's just 220. So I think we really have to look at the impact this is having on our students. So I'll end there, but I think you get the idea here. I think we need to double-check that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is Marsha McClary.
I'm Marsha McClary. I'm the parent of five children. One of my children goes to St. Anne's, no, but four children in the district. I actually live in the countryside area. And I have over 20 years of experience in the pharmaceutical and vaccine industry. I no longer am paid by the industry. I went off on my own and started a business. And part of that role was analyzing for investment, divestment, or acquisition pharmaceutical and vaccine candidates. I ran our portfolio group, and we analyzed hundreds of candidates, including vaccine candidates. So I think I know how to read studies and so forth. So one thing that's very concerning to me is the vaccine push, and I've told you guys that before. I feel like it's a personal risk-benefit decision between the parent or family member and their physicians, looking at all the data and their circumstances. And one of those factors that I feel like hasn't been, sorry, hasn't been well-versed and discussed is natural immunity. And there was a study that came out from Israel, and they studied over 600,000 people, and it's been out for a couple weeks, not marked as misinformation or anything like that. It's under peer review, so it's not final, you know, yet. But it also talks about the power of natural immunity, and I'll leave this. And it's really important because I want our leaders to, just what you guys were saying, to do the right thing over what's easy. And what's easy right now is to follow what other people are saying. But the science is telling us something different. It's adverse, it's difficult to challenge the status quo, but I'm asking you to look at the data and science and do that as we should, because we can't push vaccines if we have new data that says that maybe that student should be doing something different. Let their family make that decision. So it says in this study, let me calm down, it's hard with this. When allowing the infection to occur at any time before vaccination, from March 2020 to February 2021, evidence of waning natural immunity was demonstrated through SARS-native vaccines had a 5.6-fold increased risk for breakthrough infection and a 7-fold increased risk for symptomatic disease. SARS-CoV-2 native vaccine patients were also at a greater risk for hospitalizations compared to those that were previously infected with the disease. Conclusions: The study demonstrated that natural immunity confers longer-lasting and stronger protection against infection, symptomatic disease, and hospitalization caused by the Delta variant compared to the two-dose vaccine immunity. Let that sink in. So, you know, I think the science is evolving. We're learning as we go. But I would encourage you guys to try to recognize and ask the health departments to recognize the natural immunity, and we need to make our community okay with admitting they had COVID. There's this stigma about admitting that you had COVID, and CDC recommends or says that a third to over 40% have already had COVID. So please ask you to recognize that.
Thank you, Marsha. Appreciate your time. Jim McGrath?
My name is Jim McGrath. Little history, maybe some of you aren't old enough to remember when we could smoke anywhere. There was no restrictions, bars, restaurants, offices, even airplanes. Then data came out linking smoking to cancer, even second-degree smoke, similar to a virus in the air. Okay? But it took laws for us to get that under control and become a community and get that under control. So we can't smoke anywhere anymore. Isn't it nice? Why did we do that? We did that for the greater good of the community. We now need that same community approach for the greater good for COVID. We see reports every day of people getting COVID. Some are still dying. We see reports every day of people getting COVID, some are still dying. There's no reason that people have to be dying today for various reasons. Adults need to be adults and protect others, especially kids, and my, especially kids, especially the autoimmune compromised. Even if there's only one kid in the district, I want to make sure that the board protects that one kid, okay? That's what we have to do. So let's be a community and keep each other well-respect, and especially the kids, by following the CDC and the IDPH guidance. Lastly, I'd like to thank the board and the superintendent for all the great emails that you guys send out updating us on the COVID status and the plan that's been put together. Thank you.
Brandon Toll.
Good evening, everyone, all concerned behind me and elected officials in front of me. Brandon Toll, I'm new to the district. I have two children that are at two different schools in 220. And prior to this, I was in another country, so I was watching this from Europe, actually. So I'm my 17th year of military service, and we were over there in Germany and watching that from there. And I have to say, coming home, it's a little disappointing. We have local elected officials to make independent decisions based on objective information. We should not be handcuffed by state officials and federal mandates and things like that. Why have elected local officials, you know? We need to start looking at actual data sources, and some people might be better off just shutting the news off for a little bit. I tracked COVID across two continents as part of my role. I looked specifically at the data. I looked at data sets coming out of some countries, even in Africa. And you can look at, you can look at the individual countries and look at statistical variants to see if the numbers make sense. Like, we can do that. If you look at the demographics and you start searching the data by age, we see who are the most vulnerable. I mean, the people that are dying from COVID are typically above the average age of people Children, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I want to say less than 500 under the age of 17 since this thing started. I mean, there are, more kids are dying from slippery stairs at this point. Like, I know we get down stuff, and we're constantly doing activities, we're trying to make things. It's not a question of, like, people trying to do things, but activities and productivity are two different, two different things, and we might need to take a step back. I mean, two minutes and 30 seconds of talking in this mask, and it's uncomfortable. How are the kids supposed to interact with their teachers? They can't even see facial cues. We're supposed to, like, what, look at the size of people's eyes to know if they're have good intent? I mean, come on. What I'd like to see is criteria that's objective for how we're making decisions, and not we're beholden to other people, because otherwise, there's no point in me being here, there's no point in having local elected officials. If there's risk of losing something because of decisions we make, just let the people know what those risks are. I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you, Jim. Gina Williams?
I'm Gina Williams. I have three children in the district, at Roslin and Station. I wanted to actually speak this evening on contact tracing. So based on the numbers, as of the week ending, I think September 3rd, it said we have 15 student cases and 144 kids quarantined, excuse me, quarantined. So what I was wondering is if there can be some greater transparency around the following information. I wanted to find out if we know the rate of the close-contact positive COVID cases, to find out if we're actually quarantining healthy children, or are these children actually being identified down the line as a positive case? And then to find out, where are the contact traces coming from? Is there a particular location, event, class, that makes close contact a greater risk for a quarantine? So the first question allows us to determine if contact tracing is an effective mitigation, or if this is an abundance of caution that's creating unnecessary stress for students and staff. Some of the teachers I've spoken to are, the Zoom and having to get that set up is a concern. So if the majority of the contact trace quarantines are not COVID-positive, I thought, you know, maybe we have the opportunity to identify some common risk factor, such as lunch, the lunch period, and implement some type of creative solution to avoid sending home healthy kids. So for example, if a lunch period is a common trace point, can we start rotating students out of their seats at 14 minutes, or moving them in and out of the building? Is there an opportunity? I know at some of the elementary schools, they have covered areas where kids can go to eat. I think at Station, that's a little difficult because there's construction going on. So what can we think of to do creatively there? Because I know it's difficult for them to be at the six feet when they're eating. The other question I had was, you know, are buses a risk of contact tracing? Can we, you know, are we, is there adequate spacing on the buses? So anyway, transparency with this information, I think, allows schools, administrators, teachers, parents, students, all to have these conversations and think about some type of creative solution so that, you know, downstream, as we already heard, you know, shield might involve quite a number of downstream quarantines, and just wanting to think of something creative that we can work together to implement to help avoid unnecessary kids being home. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
That concludes our public comment. Just a couple of things. I think we're going to touch on a couple of things that were already raised, shield testing and the contact tracing is part of what we're going to talk about here going forward.
Sure.
So why don't we move into your report, then?
Janine, why don't you skip to the COVID slide? We will make this presentation in motion. So just maybe to address some of the concerns brought up regarding shield, I think that was an accurate statistic provided. Students can take a PCR outside of that to avoid having that quarantine period, so that I think addresses a portion of that. Financially, there's no obligation from the school district to pay for this testing either, so we're not financially paying for this. This is provided to us, free of cost, both from a testing and a personnel standpoint that brought out to bear. One thing regarding quarantine to keep in mind regarding those numbers, we've actually had some conversations today about disaggregating this data for our public. When you look at the number quarantine, let's say it's 135, and I think that number sticks with me from yesterday. Of those 135, many of those are contact traced through Lake County. So mom came home to, came home from work, wasn't feeling well, was positive. Close contact is the child at home, they're quarantined. When you go on our website, it looks like we quarantined that student, and we did not do that. So the majority of quarantines are actually happening cases outside of school, and also the students who do qualify for tests to stay are in that number. So there's actually students who are in that quarantine number that are actually in school as we're currently reporting it. So I want to provide a better data point for you, and we're having those conversations on how to best do that, and maybe more information to come related to that. So please know the quarantine number involves, you know, we've had some parents travel and say we have to self-quarantine, and notified the district, kept students home. They're in tests to stay, or they're home positive as well. As we've kind of looked at this, you know, speaking to your point, there was a shift in our understanding of guidance related to lunchroom specifically. That was an issue early out of the gate. We've worked hard, especially in the elementaries, and believe those plans are starting to be in place, creating that six-feet-a-distance, so looking for those problematic areas and trying to create as many creative solutions as we can to limit that number of quarantine. And that work is going to be ongoing, and we certainly will look for, are there hotspots or transitions a problem? All of those areas and everything we can do, going back to what you mentioned, is our number-one goal is keeping kids in school and doing whatever we have to do to make that happen. So maybe that provides a little bit of context, and certainly if there's some follow-up questions, if you shoot an email, we'll get some additional clarification regarding that as well. So just maybe go back to the beginning, Janine. I want to start with the opening of school. I want to commend our administrative team, our principals, our teaching staff. As good of an opening as you can, wearing a mask and under COVID, I think we are there. There was a collective sigh, and I saw a lot of tears on day one when parents were able to bring their kids to our schools, and our staff was able to welcome them back with open arms. And it's been tremendous to be able to get around the district and watch how quickly we got into the business of education again. And I really appreciate the staff's work in making that possible. Obviously, we've worked through traditional opening of school issues, you know, bus routes, and who's going to ride, who's not going to ride, realigning the best we can. Obviously, masking is new and it's different, so we continue to work out those wrinkles. But I would say, in talking to colleagues in other school districts, we're very fortunate to have the smooth opening that we've had, and that's due to a lot of work by our staff. So I appreciate that. A couple of things I want to address that I've gotten some questions on, and I know is, you know, certainly has, there's been comment on a national, or at least state level. We're going to extend it bill 18, and that's a health education bill. That passed into law on August 20th of 2021, and it's now called the Keeping You Safe and Healthy Act, which amends the Student Online Personal Protection Act. I think it's important to understand this is not effective immediately. The next step of this is to work done at the Illinois State Board of Education level, where they'll develop and they'll adopt standards that include the National Sex Education standards. This work needs to be done on or before April 3rd, or, I'm sorry, August 1st of 2022. After that work is done, it's kind of handed off to locals to adopt the standards, amend the standards, choose to and be involved or not involved. And the question I've had is, where are we at with that? We will weigh in and we will work through this with our Board of Education, with our Teaching Department of Teaching and Learning, and make, you know, whatever we feel is appropriate recommendations to our board at that time. After all of that is done, parents still have the opportunity to opt out of that component as well. So just wanted to give you some timeline. I think there's a sense of intensity that this is coming down, and it's in classrooms today. There's a lot that needs to happen over the next year or so before that even comes into play. So I just wanted to address that. Address COVID a little bit already. When I was hired as superintendent, the Board of Education asked that I put a transition plan together, and there's been a variety of activities that we've done in transition. A lot of that has been trying to learn about the district, build relationships with staff. I would just provide an update tonight that that, we're kind of moving into the phase where I'm getting out and starting to talk to staff, having listening opportunities, where we look at strengths and weaknesses of the district, structuring meetings with some of our support organizations. I'll have informal conversations where people can come. That will really kind of come to a head, and I'll report and share out with the Board of Education, I believe it's in January, on some of that work. I think that information will be good in terms of foundation as we start to talk about what is our process for strategic planning going forward. So just wanted to let you know that work is ongoing, and it's been certainly enjoyable getting out and talking to our staff, and I look forward to expanding that to the community and really hearing perceptions about our school district as we start to talk about and plan for the future. We should have Sam stand up and give her a round of applause. So maybe coming from her place, 2021 Illinois Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association Communication Test in Writing category, Sam was recognized for her work on her piece in Equity Race and Cultural Diversity initiatives happening within our school district. So we just appreciate everything you do, Sam, the quality that you bring to our school district every single day. Was mentioned here tonight, the clear communication. I'd love to say I'm responsible for all of that. You even make me sound good. So thank you for all you do, and congratulations on your award. While we're on that, with Mr. McWilliams, Barrington High School was recognized as an Apple Distinguished School by the Centers of Leadership and Educational Excellence that really demonstrate the Apple vision for learning with technology. What does this mean? It means there's a commitment, obviously, by the district to the products that are afforded to us from an education perspective, but it also, you know, involves innovation in areas of culture, team capacity, community, and finance and measurement. So I know this isn't the first time. Barrington High School is one out of 23 schools in Illinois to achieve this award, and one of 546 schools in 32 countries to be recognized. So congratulations to the high school staff, Mr. McWilliams, and obviously, Dr. Fuller, as you sit there quietly, you should be recognized for that as well. Thank you for everything you've done. And, Madam President, you pretty much stole my report here. So I don't have a whole lot to say, other than we really appreciate Mr. McWilliams' efforts to get this up and running. We are very appreciative of Barrington High School alumni Gary Susan's donations to the district, or I should say, loaning to the district to set up a really incredible display to recognize the 20-year anniversary of 9/11. It's certainly a powerful exhibit that I think we all can learn, reflect, and grow as individuals from. Just a couple of dates, obviously, we will have the, we'll have a media event this Friday, which I believe all the Board of Education was invited to attend. That will be an opportunity for the media to come see it, have brief comments, and get an opportunity to see the exhibit. Then on Saturday, September 11th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., it will be available. Saturday, October 2nd, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. prior to the home football game. And then Saturday, November 6th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We do have signup genius out, that was pushed out. I don't have signup genius. We have a wait for you to sign up, just due to the size of the display and the numbers that we can have in that space. So we ask for people to preregister. Obviously, if that fills up, we'll look at, do we need to provide additional access? So just wanted to invite everyone to attend and take a look at that. And my last two slides, really this evening, relate or connect to what will be reported out in finance, as we have conversations about some critical capital projects that the district has looked at for many years and really fall into that kind of safety bucket. And our Facility Committee talked about these things as well, and again, how do we finance these things? You're going to have a little bit more information. So I wanted to give you a visual, and we can maybe leave these slides available as those reports happen. I want to thank our neighbors Pepsi. They have stepped forward and had a very productive conversation about working with us to obtain a little bit of their property so we could accomplish what I have been told in conversations regarding the referendum as a critical project to improve safety and traffic flow on the 712 campus. So essentially, this would be a stoplight that kind of comes as you exit this building, it'd be a stoplight as you enter into Barrington High School. Obviously, part of this design is a redirection in traffic flow, but it's a huge opportunity to improve an issue that's been longstanding for Barrington High School. So there will be more conversation, probably tonight and certainly into the future, about this project, but I wanted to give you just a little bit of a visual of what that looks like. The second item that will be discussed is a restructure of the Prairie Parking Lot. One of the transition items is to realize that there's a story behind Little House on the Prairie that it doesn't involve a 1976 com show, where the, there was a piece of property obtained at Prairie Middle School, and there's been conversations about how to best leverage that to improve, again, traffic flow, parking, student safety at a very busy school. So again, I'll leave these two slides available if we need to reference them as we go forward for the evening. Any questions or comments on anything I covered?
I have a couple of questions, probably unsurprising coming from me, but first of all, congratulations to the administrators and our staff for what I believe is a very successful opening of school this year. I know, I could sense the kids were really excited, and it was really cool to see high school, middle school sports go on as well. So it is nice to see some steps towards maybe normalcy, and you could kind of, like Sarah was saying, feel kind of that buzz in there, so congratulations. And so a couple of questions, Dr. Hunt, around, just clarification. You had said that with shield testing, so once kids are tested once a week with shield testing, if they get a false positive, or not a false positive, but if they test positive, did you say they could test again for?
They could get a PCR from an outside provider, in case, well, he was here.
And if that PCR test is negative, would they then go into tests to stay, or what would happen? would happen?
Go ahead.
We'd have to go through the Lake County Health Department, but the Lake County Health Department gets all the results. But if there's a concern that there's a false positive, then we want to make sure that families are having the opportunity to follow up with that. They'd have to work through the Lake County Health Department.
Okay, so if they're suspicious that, hey, this might be a false positive, there are steps that could be taken if they get a negative PCR test?
Possibly. I mean, we're not going to tell people they can't do that. They'd have to work through that. That's all through the Lake County Health Department, right?
Okay, thank you so much.
I would add also, just asking if they're symptomatic or not. If they're asymptomatic, I think the Health Department might be a little more forgiving in terms of, you know, the, but if they are having any kinds of symptoms, then even with the PCR, I think they're going to more likely have to keep them out of school.
Be a little more strict around quarantine.
And then maybe retest a couple of days later. Sometimes it's too early to get the PCR positive.
Thank you. Could you also explain, like, what our coordination is between students who are quarantining and Barrington Transportation Company and the bus drivers? Like, are the bus drivers provided with, you know, a heads up on which students should be quarantining, or how does that communication process work?
So I believe it happens from the nurses to transportation, and that information is shared with drivers. I don't know if you're speaking to one specific issue where a student was put on a bus, but we're aware of that. That information is shared.
Yeah, I know you did share some of that situation with us, but there are some questions around that, on like, how does the communication work? So there is fluid communication with the bus company around which students?
This changes every day.
All right, and then the last question is, I think, recently, I think the, it was IDPH that changed the definition. Is this right? Just clarifying for the community, that the definition of an outbreak, instead of five cases at one school, it's, is it two related cases in the same classroom would count as an outbreak? There were some news stories that?
I know they released that, and we've asked that question a couple of different times. That hasn't been confirmed to me in my meetings. I don't know, Beth, if you've gotten confirmation on that, but what started as five with the CDC came out as two for IDPH.
Two in one classroom that were transmitted to each other, right, that were related, would count as an outbreak? And I think that's why, last week, that was part of the reason why news stories were saying that Illinois school outbreaks triple, because the definition of an outbreak changed. Is that correct?
Yes, and the thing is, we follow guidelines from the Lake County Health Department. That doesn't mean that you're going to close down a classroom. It doesn't mean, and we have to follow their guidelines. So just because it's considered an outbreak does not mean we have to do, you know, we don't know what steps we're going to have to take.
They haven't clarified yet, but potentially exposed students, if they were masked, could continue to test to stay or something like that, even if it was an outbreak in a classroom?
It's important to note that every one of these decisions is done in conjunction with Lake County Department of Health. And we're on the phone with them, talking, we're not, not me, the nurses that are working so hard are on the phone, walking through each of these, they're asking questions, and they're giving direction.
So we're still waiting on a little bit of direction, it sounds like, with regard to what an outbreak actually is, and then what steps would?
I don't know, you know, defining it or not, if we have two in a classroom or three in a classroom, they're going to walk us through and give us guidance on what our next steps need to be.
Thank you.
Can I, sorry, to piggyback on the Lake County Health Department, to clarify for myself, and I think actually the community, test to stay is run through the Lake County Health Department, the way we have to run it is, correct?
Run through shields.
Test to stay, is run through shields?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Test to say, yeah, that communication happens with Lake County Health Department.
Because in my ideal world, we'd be testing to stay every child who needs to. But we, there are conditions, and those are set up through the Lake County Health Department. So we do not have the ability to go outside of those boundaries.
The first question that is asked is, were both students universally masked? And then if that was in place, then you can start to have those conversations. If students are symptomatic, that, you know, that's off the table.
I guess I'm talking, I'm trying to just clarify for people that the whole thing that came down with the lunchrooms, with students unmasked, that was not a decision on our part to not be able to test to stay those students.
It was in conjunction with Lake County Health Department.
I have a slightly related, but not really related question. So Erin had mentioned something about buses. Are we going to, I know that we always do a pretty thorough assessment as far as looking at our technology to make sure that we have, you know, the best bus utilization. I'm sure that there's probably a little bit of, you know, like, lack of efficient utilization if there are kids that are staying home, but I just wondered if we'll have, you know, something like that on the agenda in the next couple of weeks to look at bus utilization, and whether we're doing any sort of changing as far as routes or things like that. You know, I think that as members of the community, we sometimes see school buses just parked and waiting, presumably because they're running a little bit early for their routes or things like that. And, you know, those are usually tweaks that start to get worked out after, you know, the first few weeks of school. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up as maybe something, this probably should be a future agenda items, but Erin mentioned buses, so I thought I'd hop on that.
Yeah, I won't speak specifically to Barrington. I can tell you the process in most school districts over the first couple of weeks is identifying, you know, you register your student a ride, and then you make a family decision, you know what, I'm going to drive, and kind of working through that. And I think the department's really good at trying to find efficiencies and maximize routes in those cases. And a lot of those, you know, stops along the way have stories behind them, right? Whether transporting special education students to a program, and there's a delay between, so there's a lot of reasons that that may occur. But I think from an efficiency standpoint, that's kind of an ongoing work within the bus company and with Megan.
Yeah, we have had reports, I think, almost annually on how we're doing with that. So I don't know if there's one plan in the near future, but we can maybe discuss, if you could let us know when, when might be appropriate to provide that. I think it's something that we have been doing pretty regularly as a board. Anything else, any other questions? I'm sure we're going to, we have a lot more to talk about tonight, so. Okay, all right, so let's move into informational reports. We had, I think, two FOIA requests that came in, yes, and that were addressed. Any questions on those? Okay, all right, how about board committee reports? I know there's been a lot of activity in the last approximately four weeks since we met. Anyone want to start? Go ahead, Barry.
I'll start. So I'm going to, these two kind of intersect. So I'm going to be talking about both facilities and also a little bit about the referendum. I don't want to steal any of the thunder, we're going to have a nice referendum presentation soon, but I just want to be clear with all the families and also with the board, facilities and referendum are separate, because the referendum money comes specifically from what the, the community approved a year and a half ago. Facilities money generally comes from our operating budget, DCEB money, and usually we get it out of capital projects. There are significant projects, Dr. Hunt presented two significant projects that were not part of the referendum that we voted on a year and a half ago, that absolutely need to be done. One is the stoplight right outside of, here on Lake Cook. So now we'll have two ways of ingress and egress to the high school, and the other is redoing the Prairie Parking Lot. We don't have exact numbers, but it looks like the two together are going to be somewhere around $4 million. That is not referendum money. That's going to be the Facilities Committee kind of helping to facilitate that. So I just want to make it very clear that, you know, we're going to have to be talking about that, and we're ultimately are going to have to be, you know, passing whatever we choose to do. The Facilities Committee also has other projects that we traditionally do every summer. As a reminder, this past summer, both because there was kind of a budget insecurity because of COVID, and also because we wanted to, looking ahead with these two big projects coming, we wanted to kind of save our money, we didn't do our usual $2 to $3 million in summer projects. We just did the bare minimum, which was some roofs and some asphalt work. And just to talk about that for a minute, this was a very successful summer for us. We anticipated about $500, $1,000 for the, the capital projects that we were going to do. Our board actually passed about $460,000 and approved contracts, and it looks like the budget's going to come in under budget, more like about $405 or $410,000. So, so from $500,000 to go down to $410,000, that's about $90,000 more that we've, you know, kind of saved our community. But just to plan ahead, next summer, we do intend to ask the board for the full amount of money, because there's a lot of deferred projects that need to, need to be done. Things that we put off this summer, things that we don't even know about yet, that we're still working on, trying to come up with a list. I'm mentioning this only because our committee thinks it's a very good idea to try to get ahead of the game and start working on this in the fall. In the past, we would ask for money in the spring. And we have found that if we can time the bids earlier, we can save even more money. So we'll be coming to you in the next month or two with a long list of projects that we anticipate to be doing next summer. So to be clear, $4 million for these two big projects, and then another $2.5 to $3 million for all the other projects that, that we're looking into. And I'll let our, our finance people explain how we're going to make all this work, but, but the bottom line is, we do have money, we do have a plan, you know, without deficit spending. But I just want to make sure that the board is clear that, you know, there is a plan here. Just briefly, talking about the referendum, like I said, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, the referendum, the projects that have been done already are basically the interiors of Grove Avenue and the two middle schools, and those went very well this summer. If you drive by the middle schools, you can see, and I think Grove, I haven't been by Grove, but I think the same thing, you're seeing structures now outside. So, you know, we're well on our way, and as I said, referendum presentation's going to be coming, and you'll be very excited to see what, what's going to be happening over the next year or two. Let me just ask you, do you want me to mention my other thing now, or should I do that later? Okay. The other thing I want to let the board know, we've been talking about this, I just want to share with you, I attended the webinar last week that was put on by the IASB, the Illinois Association of School Boards, about critical race theory. And I recommend all of you look into that. It's something now that's, that's available for anybody and everybody. There were about 100 school board members that attended this. It was, it was on, it was virtual. There was a professor from the University of Illinois in Champaign who basically presented what is critical race theory, and how does, you know, how does it affect the board and the school system? And I have to say, even watching it once, I'm still not sure if I can give you, you know, one quick line on what critical race theory is, but I can tell you what it's not. It is not a curriculum in the elementary schools, it's not a curriculum in the high schools. It's a theory, and it is something that is debated at the highest levels of education, in grad school and law school, and it's not something that we're going to be talking about in the next year or two in terms of how we're going to integrate it into our education. Very clearly, it's a theory, and that doesn't mean that we're not going to have discussions about equity and inclusion and diversity, but that is not critical race theory. And I think so we can have a good discussion about this topic. I'd love it if we, if we could all look at this webinar, so we can have a more intelligent discussion. And unfortunately, this webinar is not available to, it's just available to school board members, but I do ask the community, when you come and talk to us about critical race theory, I just want to make sure that you understand what it is, or have a better idea what it is, and not just kind of grab and say, oh, this is a topic I don't want you guys to talk about. We do have to talk about it, but I just want to make it, make it clear that, you know, this is not something that's going to be happening in 2020. So equity, inclusion, diversity, that is a 2020 discussion, and we want to look at how we can make our curriculum, you know, more fair. And actually, we'll be having more of a discussion at the next board meeting about that. But critical race theory is something, since it's the topic now. I should add one more thing. Critical race theory actually is from the 1990s. You know, why it suddenly has blown up is, this professor is just wondering why it's suddenly become such a big issue, but this has actually been around for 30 years, and, you know, just in the last year or two, it's suddenly become a political discussion point. So again, look at the webinar, because it was very worthwhile, and I have to watch it again, just to really, there was so much information there, so.
That's great. Other committee activity reports?
So Finance Committee. So we have a little magic that Barry was like saying, the finance is going to be magical now. So anyway, we had our meeting, and we had a little bit of a preview for the audit. It's going well, and I wanted to let you know that at the next Finance Committee meeting, the auditor will come, and all the board members will be notified and invited to come to the meeting, and it's open to the public. It'll be October 5th, before the Board of Education meeting at 4:00 p.m., and that's an opportunity to ask the auditors any kind of questions and find out more information in person. So the second thing we talked about was talking about a transfer of funds from the operating funds to the capital projects fund. This is something that Dr. Byn was alluding to in the budget presentation, or talking about the budget at the hearing. We have a surplus in our budget, and we talked about how we could transfer this. We're going to have an $8.4 million-ish surplus, and that it would make, it's recommended that we transfer $6 million of this to the capital projects funds. This would allow us, if we want to, it doesn't mean we have to, but it would allow us to complete the two projects that we've been talking about, the parking lot at Prairie and the stoplight out front, things that we're not including in the referendum, but are also important for safety and security and go along with our referendum goals, and things that we, as a board, we've talked about in a community that we think are important. As also, as Barry already said, that, that those projects are too big for summer projects, which is, you know, what we would have thought of if we didn't have this possible, this other possibility of the surplus. I think Barry already said this, but the parking lot projected cost is $2.3 million, and the stoplight projected cost at this point is $1.3 million. The other part of that money would be to offset the DCEB funding, like a $2.3 million to put into there. That would also put our fund balance at 2.99%, which keeps us in our policy of between 25% to 45%. So we're bringing this up now because we want to be able to, at our next board meeting on September 21st, have a vote on this, to have a transfer of the funds to the capital fund resolution. Anybody have any questions about that? That's kind of an awful lot.
Can you just repeat that fund balance percentage that you said?
It's 29.9, not 2.
Yeah, I heard you say 2.9.
Sorry, sorry. 29.9, sorry, I apologize.
I just want to make sure I didn't hear it wrong.
Yeah, that would be wrong. That would be completely wrong.
29.9, so we're accurate.
Which is roughly 50 million, is that?
Or less. More or less, that's about right.
And then, okay, and then one small other topic that came up at our meeting, there's going to be a change in our collection policy for unpaid fees, and Dr. Hunt is going to be sending out more details about that in his weekly report this week, so.
Unpaid school fees?
Yes, in the past, yes, there's been.
Yeah, that was a lot of numbers, a lot of information from both of you, may I just, yes, so we get a summary of that, so we can take a look at that and digest it before the next meeting?
Yeah, we can share the memo.
Especially if we're going to?
Information is available on the Finance Committee agenda from yesterday.
There's a, there's a two-page memo from Dr. Byn explaining exactly the middle part, the transfer, the fund part.
Let's link it in Weekly Report, too.
That'd be great.
Sandra, could you also send us like a one-way email with the link to the webinar that Barry referenced, so we could access it? It's more easily.
So in the IASB, they have webinars all the time, and if you go in their website, you can see archived webinars. But the link would be really helpful, because there's a lot of really good stuff in there.
I will send it, or we'll make sure that it gets in the Weekly Report. I know we've got more activity.
Policy. Policy met. You'll be hearing more from us later, but we did have a little change that we're excited about. So I think that Barry and Leah, you'll remember this, and board members, new board members, I don't know if you've seen any new policies come up since you've been on, but our, kind of the way that the Policy Committee would work is that we would, Dr. Winkelman would divide up the policies into kind of major changes and minor changes. And sometimes we would just kind of vote on accepting the minor changes together, sometimes we'd kind of read through them. Sometimes we'd kind of read through them. And minor changes were really just defined as updates in legal citations or occasionally there would be just like a minor word change or something that didn't seem to affect the meaning or the implications of the policy. At our Policy Committee meeting, Dr. Hunt suggested that we take those policies and rather than go through them specifically, that we add that to the consent agenda. And we thought that was a great way to potentially expedite our meetings a little bit and take some extra work off of board members when it's just a minor policy change. I think also included in that are policies that we review because we do internally as a district, a five-year policy review just to make sure that there isn't some sort of crazy policy that just somehow kind of has been sitting out there for 25 years and no one has looked at it. So we make sure that we lay eyes on all policies every five years and it's on a rotating basis. So those policies that we reviewed and didn't see any reason to make any changes would also be included in that grouping. So keep an eye on that in the consent agenda. I have a couple of caveats to that, but I guess before I go on, does anyone have an issue with, like, does that work for everyone as far as a new way of going forward or do you have any concerns?
No concerns.
Okay. And it'll follow the same rule, like I read this incorrectly last night, but it will still follow, like tonight in the consent agenda, we'll approve the first reading. And then they'll come back again for the second reading of these minor changes within the consent agenda.
Great question. And actually, I have the same one and I double-checked today with the attorneys and you do not need to do it twice if it's in the consent agenda. It can be one time. And again, this is completely acceptable and permissible to do it this way. So I double-checked both today knowing that we would be talking about it tonight.
So if we prove the items on the consent agenda tonight, there's no need to bring them back for a second reading?
That's correct. The ones that are in the discussion item where they would be major and content specific where you would look at those twice, those we would need to go to two meetings in order to officially approve them as a second reading. Anything in the consent agenda can go forward with just the action tonight.
Is that still okay with everyone if those are just reviewed once?
I think we see how it goes. I mean, I think it'll work out fine. I think there's going to be one that I'm going to count out on. So tonight, but that's okay. That's okay then, we just come back for a second reading or come back for approval next time if we pull it off.
And the ones that need major changes are read and reviewed individually, right?
And to be clear, if you see something in consent you want to talk about, we just move it out.
Yeah, just pull it out. Good idea. Awesome. All right, well, then we will get into the meat of policy a little bit later. Sandra, did you want to mention, or do you want to pull it off of consent and talk about it individually, the effective date?
The effective date one. Yeah, consent agenda is next. I didn't know if there's anything else that you wanted to say about, because I think there was a couple of changes from what was originally posted. Craig, if you wanted to talk to that real quick and then we'll, unless there's any, are there any other committee reports?
Safety.
Oh, safety and security. I knew we were missing one. Then we'll get to that, Craig.
I was able to go to my first, or virtually go to my first safety and security meeting. So safety week's coming up, September 20th through the 24th. I know a district emailed one out to all the parents. So that's our annual district-wide focus on safety and students are going to participate in lessons, drills, opportunities to practice various responses, awareness of available resources, partnerships with our first responders. There's a different activity throughout the week that was sent out to all the parents. We have some training for the staff coming up. Members of the safety team will create and facilitate tabletop exercises for our teachers and staff this year in order to practice responses to various safety scenarios. And that's going to incorporate the use of this new Volo ASAP app. So, and that seems really cool. It is an app that provides communication between teachers in real time and then it also alerts law enforcement of a critical incident. Because I know we have radios throughout the school. And then with the construction at Grove, all of our schools now have a secure vestibule, vestibule, best, I can't say it, entrance. Thank you. So that was our last school that did not have that. So that is wrapped up, that was wrapped up this summer.
Any other committee or event reports? Awesome job, Katie. Okay, so next up is the consent agenda. And Craig, do you want to just give us that quick update you have before we make a motion there?
You may have noticed in the first version of the policies under consent, press recommends that you, if you update a policy, that you would remove the adopted date and just put the most recent date that you've reviewed or revised. That is their standard practice, but it is not our standard practice. So as a district, we have historically left the adopted date and then added any time that we have reviewed or revised. So there's kind of that chronological history of when the board has looked at a policy. And so, or you may have noticed that they struck it and recommended that. We've added it back in blue and highlighted it as something that our district, just to reassure the board, that we're going to continue with the practice we've done for the last several years of leaving all of those dates and times when the policy has been looked at and reviewed on our policies. And we'll continue to do that tonight and throughout the year.
And if we've seen no changes, it will say what at the bottom?
If there's no changes, it's simply reviewed.
Reviewed.
If we did something like Angela had noted where it was simply a legal citation update, it would be revised. Those are the two distinctions of, and then if we do a major change, if it's something that we've actually looked at holistically and there was content changes, that would also be revised. But we'll always leave the adopted by date and anytime that policy is touched, you'll have an update with the date that the board looked at.
So with that explanation, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Submit.
Second.
Any discussion? I have one item, but we'll see if anybody else has anything. Any question? Make sure that you see that there was a revised personnel report that was put there. I want to, and I will read through what all we are, we're approving in a moment. I wanted to ask that, I'm going to just make sure I get it right. Exhibit 2125E3, we make a mention of an effective date and when, in there, we make a mention of effective date that's in the past, which is sometimes what happens on policies when then when these dates get in there and they're left in there and it's just kind of awkward. I was going to recommend that we revise it to remove that date and bring it back as a second reading. Is there any? I think we'd amend the motion that was made if we pull it off. So Angela, you.
I will read.
Sorry, could you point to the part of the exhibit you're talking about?
Sure. It's where it mentions, I think it's January 1st, 2017. It's on page 2, under number 2.
Exhibit 2 of policy. We didn't see it there and it wasn't in there.
Oh, I see, okay. Okay. So there's a couple of other changes. I would just ask that we address that as we've addressed other dates in the past. So are you okay if we pull it off? Have you amended to pull that off of the consent agenda? And who seconded it? It was over here, right?
Leah.
Are you okay to?
Yes.
Pull that one up? Any other questions or comments? Let me read through what we have on here before we take our vote. We have.
So you're proposing to just take that date off, right? The effective date off?
Okay. Yeah, I think we just didn't. Take the whole exhibit off and then we bring it back.
But for number 2, your point was to take the January 2017.
Okay, so what we have then on the consent agenda are minutes from July 21st, open minutes, and then open and closed minutes from August 10th. We also have, and I'll read through these policies that are being approved through the first readings, they're minor edits like we just talked about. So 110, the school district legal status, 120, district organization operations in cooperative agreements, 130, school district philosophy, 230, school district elections, 330, line and staff relations, 6100, using animals in the education program, 6170, Title One programs, 6255, assemblies and ceremonies, 7220, bus conduct, 7230, misconduct by students with disabilities, 7280, communicable and chronic infectious diseases. So I did not read the one that we're pulling off. Will you notice that? And also the revised personnel report for today. So we're ready to take a vote? Roll call, please. Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Katie Carum. And passes. All right, we have a couple other action items, actually one next action item on our board priorities. At the end of our last board meeting, we went through the priorities we had worked on back in June and we agreed to the changes that are on the agenda here. They are listed in, I'm just going to read, I think I'll just read through them so everybody can know what we're agreeing upon. Reading a lot, though, but they are listed in alphabetical order so not to show any priorities for any one item. So they are budget, to efficiently use referendum dollar, excuse me, efficiently use referendum funds, enhance financial stability, and under community relations, to establish the timeline and community engagement for strategic plans, implement superintendent transition plan, strengthen community engagement with emphasis on transparency. Under equity, race, and cultural sensitivity, we have assess, evaluate, and recommend possible improvements, collaborate and communicate with the community, promote racial and cultural sensitivity and equitable behavior, and train district leadership. Under school safety and security, we would continue referendum project timeline and pursue best practice in cybersecurity. Under student experience, which in the past we've had categories under technology, SEL, optimal time for learning, we've combined those all under student experience, to assess and address learning loss, educate and prevent adolescent risk behaviors, foster digital citizenship, foster social, emotional learning for all students, and innovate in teaching and learning, including technology. Any concerns or comments? I think this reflects our discussion.
Looks good.
The action verbs.
I know, that was really good work, you guys. I love that, the action verbs. All right, so can we have a roll call?
Motion.
Didn't we get a motion?
Yeah.
I move.
Barry first? Barry, somebody second?
Second.
Angela. All right, now a roll call. Sandra Bradford. Yes. Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox. Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Steve Wang. Thank you. All right, let's walk into our discussion items now. So first up, we have support for students returning to school.
Dr. Byrne, can Ms. Jones come up?
Well, they're coming up. Are we okay? I know we ran in here after the, after our workshop. Is everybody okay? Do we need to take a break or are we good? All right. Thank you.
So as they're getting set up tonight, we're going to discuss, we pressed a little bit on assessing students earlier in the year to try to gauge kind of where we were academically and identifying gaps and put all the resources that had been put in place with some of the SFR funds to kind of activate that with our students. And certainly, social, emotional learning is a critical part of our educational program. So looking forward to that update and certainly, you know, as we walk through this, if there's questions, you know, feel free.
Mrs. Jones, I will be presenting tonight on the supports put in place for students this year, both from an SEL standpoint as well as an academic standpoint. So now we'll start with a brief overview. The whole world has learned a great deal from the COVID-19 pandemic. Researchers at the Learning Policy Institute have made it very clear that it is essential that we not return to normal, but rather create a new normal that is grounded in best practice. As our students return to full in-person learning, it's important to follow the research which reports that it is essential for our students to, one, experience warm relationships and social, emotional supports achieved by redesigning our schools so that they are relationship-centered with built-in time for creating community, trust, as well as belonging. Engage in outdoor play and exercise, expressive arts, and collaborative activities that support brain development and learning, encounter authentic learning tasks as well as inquiry projects that are connected to their experiences. Also, assess what students need, both socially and emotionally, as well as academically. And lastly, accelerate student learning through both time and high-quality instruction. This presentation will take a holistic approach and talk about how Barrington School District is supporting our students with SEL as well as academics. Okay, so now we're going to launch into our academic data. The assessments that we will review tonight are our national assessments that both inform and help our teachers design their instruction. These assessments include FastBridge, NWEA MAP, as well as PSAT, NMSQT, as well as our SAT data. So first up is our FastBridge early reading assessment. So our FastBridge assessment is a tool that we use as a universal screener for grades kindergarten and 1 in both reading and math. So what we're looking at now is the early reading. So next to the grade level column, you'll notice the national average and then our fall 2019 data as well as fall 2020 data and then this fall data. So in the far right, you can see the national comparison and our Barrington students are above the national average and they are right where we want them to be. So this is a really great celebration. Now, as we move on to early math, same column next to the grade level is our national average and then our fall of 2019 data as well as fall of 2020 and then this fall. And again, we are still higher than the national average and our kindergarten and first graders are where we would want them to be. Okay, now we'll launch into our NWEA map assessment for reading. So the measure of academic progress assessment is a computer adaptive test that measures reading and math achievement and is administered to our students in grades 2 through 8. So similar to the last slides with our FastBridge assessments, you'll notice that the fall national average is in the column next to the grade level and then our winter 2019, 2020 data, because we did not administer this assessment in the fall of 2019, so that's the earliest data set that we have for that. And then fall of 2020 and then this fall and then the national comparison when you take the fall data and then compare it to the fall national average. And so again, our second through eighth graders in reading are above the national average and are where we want them to be at that grade level. So what I do want to also point out is that for any differences that you notice in the, with our local data, is within or very close to the standard error of measure, which for the map assessment is typically between 2.8 and 3.5. So that, for the most part, explains any differences that you would notice in our local data. And similarly, with our map math assessment, same thing as reading, is administered to grades 2 through 8. You'll see our fall national average compared to the winter of 2019, fall of 2020, and then this fall. So similar to both FastBridge and then our map reading scores, our students are above the national average and again, falls within that same standard error of measure being between typically about a 2.8 to a 3.5, which is, can explain some of the differences that you see on the screen.
So you said that lineup, is there any concern about the difference between winter 2019 to 2020 and fall 2021 or is that pretty typical? Because some of that is down by like eight to nine points, I see.
Yeah, it is. So what we really want to focus on is our fall 2021 data and look at where we're at in comparison to that national. and look at where we're at in comparison to that national average and look at that year of instruction, because it's really most important that we know where our students are at right now so that we can start to accelerate their learning, because it's really hard to really pinpoint what the cause of any difference is. It's hard to say, is it learning loss? Is it what wasn't taught? Is it schooling loss? There is also, it's important to note that the administration of the actual tests was different in the fall of 2020 versus now. Many of our students took the assessments remotely in the fall of 2020, so that could explain some of it. There are just so many variables. It's hard to exactly pinpoint one particular reason for any difference that could be in addition to the standard error of measurement. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so you're saying that the important thing is to work from where we are now and that we shouldn't be too alarmed that we're maybe 8 or 9 points off from a year ago.
Correct. So your board priority of addressing and assessing learning loss, it's most important to assess where students are at in relation to the grade level standards so that we can intervene where appropriate and move students along their trajectory of learning as it relates to the learning progressions for that particular grade level.
I also heard there's a lot of factors that play into that. And look at timing. The 19 data is compared on 1920s compared on a winter assessment, so those students had a half year of instruction.
That's true.
As well.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I do agree, Byrne, though. Every one of these charts, just to go back to kindergarten, you're seeing that gradual decline from winter to fall to fall. Do you folks have the national averages over those timeframes? So in other words, fall 2020 and winter 2019, 20, to show that, you know, that plus relative to national averages consistently at that level or greater?
Yeah, so luckily, we have Dr. Dukowski in the back with us, and I'm sure he would be able to take a look at the national average for the different years. But I do know that MAP does national averages every five years, and they were most recently done in 2020. Is that accurate, Dr. Dukowski?
So they were updated, the national norms were updated.
Can you wait till, can you get the mic from there?
Okay. The national averages were updated just prior to the pandemic. We actually got the 2020 norms in September of 2020. So we actually, if you remember the last time that the data were presented, we presented it along with the winter norms. And we're consistently above the national average substantially and even significantly above the national norms in winter. So when you look from, you know, 2nd grade winter to a fall, 2nd grade winter to 2nd grade fall, those are, it's kind of looking at apples and oranges. We do have it in the preview, in the slides from last year. It's on board docs, and we can certainly provide that for you if you don't have it. But you can see that it's pretty consistent that we're well above the national norms.
Sorry, can I ask one more? So pandemic-wise, let's say a 2nd grader started at 2nd grade, and now they're obviously a 4th grader. Follow individually these children and see where they're. Yeah, we could. So what's important to keep in mind about this data is that this is looking at the data from year to year, and this is not cohort data. So in order to look at cohort data, we would have to do that a little bit differently. So this is where students are coming at, at that particular grade level. Great questions. Okay, so now we'll transition to our PSAT/NMSQT, which, for those of you who are wondering, that stands for National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. And so, in the far left-hand column, you'll see the national average composite, which is a 960. And the fall of 2020, our average composite was an 1142. There's an asterisk for the fall of 2021 because we haven't yet administered that assessment, but we are going to in October. So stay tuned. But at the moment, our Barrington students are above the national average, following a trend. And as we transition to our SAT data, similarly to the PSAT, our national average composite score is a 1010. And then in the spring of 2019, our average composite was an 1149. And then the spring 2020 assessment, which is important to point out for this, was administered in the fall of 2020, so students had additional instruction time. That average composite score was an 1168. And then in the spring of 2021, the average composite was an 1153. And like we talked about briefly with the MAP assessment, there is a standard error of measure with the SAT assessment. And for the composite score of that assessment, that standard error of measure is 40. So now I'd like to talk a little bit about the academic supports that we are putting in place as a district in order to accelerate students' learning through both time and high-quality instruction, which is very important because we're at a pivotal point to really, truly reimagine what both school and education can and should look like in our post-pandemic world. It's essential that we focus on learning acceleration, not just remediation. And accelerating learning for all of our students. Our students in Barrington are provided access to effective grade-level Tier 1 instruction that's focused on the essential skills and concepts for that particular grade level. Additionally, student supports are based on evidence of what a student knows and is able to do while focusing on the grade level standards. So really honing in on what is that grade level student expected to know and be able to do from that beginning of the year to the end of the year and progress appropriately. So now we will additionally provide a high-level overview of the supports in place this year that are aimed at accelerating learning for all of our students. We are so fortunate to, as a district, be able to utilize our Esser funds to be able to support this important work, which will include additional student support, intervention, and resources, as well as provide professional learning in order to support the implementation of our Vision Cycle School Improvement Process, which includes the use of classroom data to inform both instruction and learning. Because what we are sharing with you tonight is our national testing and what we use to both inform and design instruction. But that Vision Cycle data is really going to allow us as a district to really hone in on what's happening at the classroom data level. Now, specifically in regards to intervention, we are so thrilled about the additional supports we are able to put in place for our students due to the use of our Esser funds. We are able to hire MTSS coaches at the high school level that will support teachers in providing supports to students. And one component of that could be that coach really taking a deep dive into that classroom level data with the teacher so they know how to personalize learning appropriately for each individual student. At the K-8 level, math and reading interventionists will support students by providing both adaptive and personalized instruction for all students. And additionally, MTSS data managers at both the middle and high schools, the middle school and high school, will allow for staff to focus on providing supports to students with the use of data to inform their instruction. And I know I'm saying data a lot because that's a very important thing, to know and understand our data, both from a national perspective, a state perspective, as well as a local classroom level perspective. So we're truly getting our students what they need. And last, but certainly not least, and this is not new, but our instructional coaches are continuing to provide ongoing job embedded support for our teachers that is rooted in student outcomes and data.
What grade levels are the, you said the MTSS was for high school? What grade levels are the other four?
The, at the K-8 level, the math and reading interventionists are working with our students. And then at the high, the middle school and high school again, are MTSS data managers. And now I'm going to transition to Mrs. Jones, who's going to talk about social emotional learning.
And before we do that, I know Melissa, and I wanted to make sure we recognize our directors who are here with us tonight, who help us to make all of this possible and are out in the schools and working with teachers and working with students. So if you guys could stand up, that would be great. So we have Sharon Jacobellis is here. She's our secondary director in student services. Jordan Anderson is our new director for student services at the elementary level. We have Kelly Hansen, who is a director at the secondary level for teaching and learning. And then Ben Dukowski, who is our director for the data.
And assessment.
And assessment. So thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you all.
So if you have questions, they get to answer them.
They couldn't have been further asked.
Right? I know.
They were afraid we'd ask them to help. No. They do great work. So Melissa, are you going to drive on?
Yeah.
Okay.
So with the return to school, we continue to reexamine and refocus on our SEL work that we're doing. And I think I'm really privileged to be able to work alongside Melissa and her team, with our team together. Our collaboration is pretty natural, and it's been a good start to the year for us. And I know that we're going to continue this collaboration to make sure that we're meeting the child's needs as a whole. So just to give a little background, the Collaborative for Academic Social and Emotional Learning, which is CASL, is a trusted source that we use for knowledge about high-quality and evidence-based social and emotional learning. The CASL 5, which is up there, is what we've been focusing on consistently as we do our preparation and we do our work to determine what, how to meet students' needs. We're focusing on students' self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and decision-making. As we move into this year, we believe it's most, you can flip to the next one, there you go. We believe it's really most beneficial to integrate the SEL throughout the school's academic curriculum culture, across the broader context of the school-wide practices and policies, and then through our ongoing collaboration with our families and community organizations. So these coordinated efforts that are listed here are all part of a broader system that shaped the learning and development and the experiences for our students. I'm going to review examples of this, these critical practices that we've put in place. So CASL came out in January of 2021 with a roadmap for schools to be able to come back, you know, successfully, and what are the things we need to have in place. So these are the four things I'm going to talk through today to highlight the things that we've added on to our work that we're doing. So the first critical practice is to take time to cultivate and deepen relationships, build partnerships, and plan for SEL. And the second one is to design opportunities where the adults can connect, heal, and build their capacity to support our students. We are so fortunate to have very strong relationships in our community. We have Be Strong Together, which is a coalition of the community groups, and they have educational entities, healthcare organizations, and community members all come together. They offer speakers and events, parent coffees, and educational opportunities for students and for adults. And they develop programming for students of all ages. And they have a really robust website that has quite a few resources on there for parents. We work collaboratively through Kyle Kick, who's the executive director, to make sure that we're offering programs that our community is asking for. So that work is done also with the Barrington Youth and Family Services. We work with Betsy Wintrigger, who is the director from Barrington Youth and Family Services. I had a nice meeting with her the other day where we're working on our planning for this year. They work collaboratively with us to provide counseling and preventative programming to students and families. She did share that she's seen an uptick in the families that she's meeting with as opposed to just meeting with our students, which is a good thing. The Barrington Youth and Family Services is located across the street from Jewel, their new location, and they offer drop-in services for students at the secondary level. So 6th grade up can drop in for services, and they don't need to have an appointment on Monday nights between 3:00 and 5:00 to do that. They also partner with us to, with Be Strong, and we offer parent universities or parent support groups. We've done a few topics that we've presented together for our staff as well. They run programs at our schools. Last spring, we offered programs at the middle schools for students who were struggling quite a bit with, you know, the situation with being in the pandemic, on top of everything else that's going on. They were able to stay after school and have opportunities to meet with staff from Barrington Youth and Family Services to talk through some of those concerns and issues, an extra layer of support. And they also co-treat students with us. So we have a working relationship with them. If we have students that we're seeing in our schools and we feel like the level of need might be higher than what we can address in a school setting, Barrington Youth and Family Services staff will provide screeners for our students and determine what types of supports they need to put in place. Those might be ongoing supports that the district helps with the financial portion for some of our families as well. We also collaborate with NAMI. And NAMI is the, NAMI, I'm saying NAMI, oh my gosh, NAMI. And NAMI is, you know, the organization for the National Alliance on Mental Illness. And, you know, the reason I wanted to make sure I highlighted NAMI is because their message to everybody right now is to remember to acknowledge that the many emotions you, your students, your loved ones, or your colleagues may be experiencing, normalize the conversation around mental health and those around you, and look for opportunities as we navigate through this time, this unique time. And, you know, it's really important for us to keep that message in mind as we're stepping through this. People are at all different levels of healing. People are at all different levels of crisis. So we need to make sure we're remembering that and make it okay to talk about those things and encourage our students and staff to share with us so that we can help them. We talk about building the adult capacity. We do that also through Dr. Jason Washburn, who is out of, he's affiliated with Lori's Children's Hospital. He also does research that has led to work that is available through the Center for Childhood Resilience. And that is, it's programming that started and it's supported through is be the Illinois State Board of Education for our teachers and educators to be able to, you know, attend webinars, their quick lessons, their coping, you know, strategies for teachers to apply with their students. And it's a lot of resources for our teachers to be able to use as they're helping our students heal. We also have to remember that our teachers are also learning to heal. Dr. Washburn did some professional development with us in the spring of last year. And that was regarding the Unified Protocols. Unified protocols are making sure that we're diagnosing what we need to be treating and making sure that we're giving the right treatment. So right now, we're seeing the transdiagnostic diagnosis of disorders and emotional regulation. So in the past, our social workers would work with the student, and they would apply diagnostic-specific interventions for students during their time that they were working with them. But some students are being diagnosed with coexisting disorders now, and we're seeing that a lot more, and they require a different approach. So this is one of the many reasons when we ask parents if we can have them sign a release to talk to the outside professionals, we want to be doing things that mimic what's going on in their outside healing and their outside therapy so that we're making sure we're being consistent and we're giving the child the most responsible support that we can give to them. Dr. Doug Bolton is a licensed clinical psychologist from Formative Psychological Solutions. And you might remember him from, clinical psychologist from Formative Psychological Solutions. And you might remember him from, he did a parent university for us through Zoom where he talked about post-traumatic growth as opposed to the post-traumatic stress disorder. How are we learning from this? How can we, how can we come out of this and be a little stronger because of it? He also led a session for our staff members and talked about how he understands that they're part of this pandemic and how they need to remember to care for themselves and make sure that they're not too hard on themselves as they were stepping through the same things that everybody else was stepping through. The third critical practice is to create safe, supportive, equitable learning environments that promote all students' social and emotional development. And much of this work that we're talking about, you know, in the actual environment of the building, has been done through the work of our referendum or is going to be done. Examples might include things such as the removal of the mobiles and additions onto the building so that all students are in the facility as opposed to having to transfer from outside in or vice versa. Also, we have sensory rooms that have been added or updated in our buildings, in our elementary buildings and, well, middle school and high school, so that students have a safe place to de-escalate and to regulate their emotions. Those are just a few of the examples. The staff within the environment who adds another layer of creating a safe environment for students, we've been able to add additional staff, as Melissa mentioned, through the ESR funds, which is the, you know, elementary and secondary school emergency relief. And some of those have, some of those additions have included additional safety and security personnel, social workers, mental health consultants, nurses, and the MTSS interventionists we talked about. Okay, so supports that we have that are in our school buildings on a consistent basis, we have school psychologists. And this is, again, I cannot thank the board enough for voting on allowing us to, or allowing us, I should say, to increase our social work and psychologists over the past few years, not just with ESR funds, but on a consistent basis. So that we have a psychologist and we have a social worker in all of our schools' pre-K through 12th grade. The 12+ is our transition program, and we have one of our psychologists who is at the transition program, working with our adults, our young adults. We have school counselors at the sixth through eighth, I'm sorry, the sixth through 12th grade level. And the school counselors, you know, their role, we think of their role a lot of times, like especially at the high school, that they're helping kids with the post-secondary. Yes, they are doing that. They are also the people who know some of our kids the best, and so they are a huge support to them as they're returning to school to make sure they're reaching out to them, checking in on them, and making sure that they're getting the supports that they need as they transition back. We have the MTSS interventionists, and we did mention that there are reading and math interventionists. We also provide interventions for social work, I mean, for social-emotional needs. And that is something through the ESR funds, the MTSS process, it systematically identifies individual students' needs, and then we provide research-informed supports for students. So these individuals could be something like, it could be something like the student goes to the reading, a reading support, a reading interventionist, and they have six to eight weeks of intervention. And we monitor their progress as they do this, and eventually they graduate from the need for the intervention. We also do that with our social work. We might have students who have, who need to work on problem-solving skills. That would be done through an intervention. They don't need to go to the social worker or be qualified for special education services on a consistent basis, but they need to go for an intervention to help them get over a hump or get through something and learn a coping skill. Okay, we have our wellness team. The wellness team is comprised of individuals who provide support to, acute support to students. These team members each bring a particular area of expertise to the intervention process. So typically, students who are working with a wellness team staff member require services and support in one of these areas. They're some of our, you know, students who are facing some of our biggest challenges as far as their mental health and social-emotional well-being. The goal of the wellness team is to provide prevention, education, and intervention to students in crisis and to help transition them back to a place where they're able to apply the coping and problem-solving skills with a lower level of support and a greater level of independence. And although this team has begun its work at the high school level, these individuals assist their colleagues and students throughout all schools. They also, if they're needed, they will go to a different school and work with the social worker or psychologist in a building and provide support. They also provide training to other staff members and teams throughout the district. So the last, fourth critical practice is to use data as an opportunity to share power, to deepen our relationships, and to continuously improve support for our students and families and community members. So since the start of the pandemic, we've heard often the concerns that have arisen in Barrington regarding the well-being of our students, our parents, and our staff. And, you know, we take those concerns very seriously. We've had, you know, discussions about this numerous times at the board table. In response to those concerns, in addition to all of the supports that we're putting in place, we've also worked with Hanover Research to develop a trauma-informed survey. This survey, and I'm not supposed to use the word survey, I know, because we've been surveyed out, but I will say, this survey, this one really counts because it's important, not that the others didn't, but we do really want to make sure that people are filling out this survey and giving us their feedback. So it's optional. It does ask you to share your name. It would be really helpful if, you know, community, if you could share your names, and students, if you could share your names, parents. It will be offered to students in sixth grade up. It will be offered to parents of all levels, and then it will be offered to our staff as well. And the survey is, the information that we're gathering from the survey is confidential, and it will only be used to identify common areas of need throughout our community. And then we may also reach out to individuals who we identify as people who are saying, I need more support, or I'm not happy with the services that are being provided, or why aren't you doing, you know, A, B, or C? And kind of, we'll be able to reach out to people. The survey window opens. Thank you to our IT team and to Samantha, our communications director. The survey window opens tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, and it will remain open for two weeks. It's not anything that students will take in school. They're not going to set aside a class period to do it, so it's not going to interrupt instructional time. And it also gives people an opportunity to take this survey in the privacy of their own home where they can go through it at their own pace and give some helpful feedback so that we know how to support people. We encourage you to provide the feedback to us so that we can, we can design our work so it's more targeted and effective. This is another data source that we use to guide our supports for students, and that's the ACREA Personal Learning Plan. The students share their personal goals for the year and when they take, and you can see that up in the little blue circle up in the left there, it says personal statement. This is just a sample that we have through ACREA, but this is a personal learning plan that the goal is for the students to, as they're taking the SEL screener, they're sharing with us, you know, their thoughts on, do I have supports at school? This is different. This is not a trauma-informed screener. It's offered twice a year. And the goal, along with their ratings on the screener, help the teacher and the student better understand the student's desires and strengths and areas of challenge. So the teachers conference with their students, and they talk about what they can do to reach their goals by using those strengths, and then how to overcome their obstacles. The teachers are able to modify their instruction to better meet the student's learning needs based on, you know, those kind of conversations and saying, you score really well here. It looks like you're struggling here. What do we need to do differently? And it really does give a teacher a good sense of what the students' needs are. And I think it also helps the student realize, my teacher cares enough to dig this deep down into me personally. There are times when the students need more support than those classroom interventions, and then that's when the MTSS teams will review, this would be one piece of data that they would review. They would also get data from other sources. So for example, teacher, you know, teacher observations, parent input, and then some of the surveys that we're doing and some of the screeners that we do. The screener is offered in October and then again in March. So it's, we do it at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year.
Which age group?
We do the screener from second grade through 12th grade. We, our SEL team was able to meet and develop lesson plans for teachers to help students understand what the questions were asking because we felt that was a need so that they, the questions are obviously designed for grade levels so that they understand them. They're asked differently at different grade levels, but we wanted to make sure that the students knew what was being asked of them. So we did some mini lessons that the teachers developed prior to doing the screener.
How do you do it in middle school or high school when there's all sorts of teachers?
So we usually choose like a class period to do it. And Steve, you could probably share a little bit about how you were able to administer the screener at the high school level?
So we usually have a special period that's built in, so take everybody offline. So. So we have a special period that we build in, so we take everybody offline. So maybe third period's extended 45 minutes and it becomes a survey period. So usually happens a couple of times a year for the SEL survey, but also for the Illinois Youth Survey that we want to get feedback from all of our students. So a cycle that we follow on a yearly and two-year plan. There's some other things we have to do as well, so.
So I did want to share with you, you know, in summary, Dr. Hunt kicked off this school year with our hashtag SeeTheStudent220. And our focus in Barrington 220 is to see the whole student. Like I said, that's why we're collaborating. Our departments are collaborating, and we're making sure that we are seeing the whole student. And we have many supports in place for a typical school year, but we've added these additional supports for students, for staff, and for families. And as we transition into our new normal together, we need to work together. We hope that our community will continue to encourage and help one another and remind each other that we are all working together. It's okay to talk about your feelings, and it's okay to ask for help for yourself or for others. We have students who are very skilled in doing that, and they help each other a lot. So I hope our parents will give us the feedback we need to make sure we're providing supports as well as our teachers. So thank you for your attention this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? I just wanted, I had one question. Again, thank you so much for that. That's a lot of data, a lot of data to go through. You talked about ESR funds that are funding some of the, some of the staff. Please remind us. I believe we've supplemented in all areas. There's nothing that would go away in years to come, but we've supplemented and added and enhanced in each of the areas. And I want to make sure that people know that that's not going to go away after the ESR funds go away. It might just be back to our normal levels.
Great. So we will have the typical supports that we have in place. We're amping it up to make sure we have more people to work with, more students, and meet more needs. Yes. And these are year positions that we have added to the staff.
Thank you. The number of individuals is the difference.
Right, yes.
The level of service, you know, will be impacted by that, but the services will be in place. And I think to that point, you know, Beth mentioned this, there's a ton of support and service here. If you have need and you need help from a parent perspective, now is the time to please step forward and let us support students through.
So how should parents do that? Should they reach out to their teacher or their principal or both?
All of the above. Just reach out, and you will, a parent will be directed in the right direction. Because we have, and I will tell you, teams are up and running, you know, I know it's the start of the school year. I've already sat in on data teams where they're already talking about data from this year and determining what they need to do. So people are on this, and they're, they're ready for people, you know, if people call, if parents call and they're seeking help, you can talk to teachers, you can talk to administrators, you know, just make sure that you reach out to somebody, our related service staff, psychologists, social workers, anybody. Just call or email and let us know that you need support.
Thank you both so much for all the thought and the work that went into this and the data. A couple of questions. How are we with bilingual availability with the Hanover Survey, ACREA, and also the psychologists and social workers?
We have the Spanish version as well, so we're offering that as well. We do have some bilingual staff, and especially the Barrington Youth and Family Services, they have bilingual staff as well. So we're making sure we're trying to support all, all of our students.
So the social workers and psychologists are available at a bilingual capacity for all grade levels, right? I mean, that might need it, like high school and middle school?
Yes.
And as a part of our community?
You know, something we've added to, Erin, is we've, we've added home, like liaisons, and we have bilingual liaisons, family liaisons.
Oh, I forgot the word.
Home, family. And so they are reaching out to some of our families. We have, at the high school, we're working on an interpreter at the high school level for our students with special needs. And then we have family liaisons at the high school. We also have a family liaison at the district office, elementary and middle school levels, so.
Because I know that some of our demographics got hit harder by COVID.
Yes.
In terms of family loss than maybe other parts of our district.
And we've offered, Barrington Youth and Family Services offered support groups at Sunny Hill through our staff. And so we were able to support families in, you know, in a more centralized location for some of our families. They also do Zoom. So there are lots of opportunities for us to support.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for covering that. And then with regard to, I know that for the survey, sixth and up can take it, and then parents at every grade level. What are, is there like a training or something for elementary teachers just to, you know, kind of pick up on, you know, if a student does need extra service because of something that's COVID-related?
Yes.
Is there, is it not necessarily like a universal screen, but something that they're paying attention to with each student, maybe asking some questions for each one, just to make sure a student that may need something extra isn't kind of like slipping through and we don't know it?
So we have, obviously, we have the teachers, you know, monitoring for the academic portion and doing quick assessments along the way. So formative assessments, so we're making sure we're keeping track of student progress. As far as SEL goes, all of our staff is trained to identify when students are struggling with their social-emotional well-being. And so, yes, they all have that training. Also, that's just, I mean, we're all super sensitive to the fact that we need to be looking out for these things. And then we have additional layers of that support where we have people reaching out to families and saying, you know, we haven't seen your child at school yet, you know, doing the home liaison. We were able to do home visits with people. So there's, yes, we have a heightened, a heightened level of sensitivity to our students' needs.
And that home liaison piece is new because of the ESR funding, is that right?
No.
Have we always had something like that?
We, yes, we've had the home liaison position. The person who was in that position retired, so we have somebody new now, but we've always had that position, yeah.
We've been able to support it a little bit more, or we just, we just, or as needed as, in terms of?
It's well-supported.
Yeah.
Family, yes, it's very well-supported. I mean, I'm looking at Steve, but that's very well-supported.
No, that piece is great. I didn't know we had that service, and this is really good, especially, you know, in the top.
And I think our psychologists and social workers are spending more times, more time talking with families as well. They've spent, I think I mentioned this one of the last times when we were, you know, in the pandemic where we were in, not in school, and we had a board meeting. We talked about the fact that our psychologists and social workers are spending a lot of time talking to parents, more than they ever have, you know, about their concerns and about their needs because it impacts the family.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much. Very encouraging.
And we'll get that posted to Board docs so we can refer to it if we need to?
Yes.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. It was a long presentation, but we wanted to make sure you.
It was really good.
Really, really good. Much needed and worth it. So next up is going to be our discussion on the referendum construction update.
Yay.
Do we need to take a little break, or are we good, guys?
If I could just stand up, because that would be a bit more.
Maybe like two minutes?
A two-minute break. A two-minute break, okay. Oh, we transitioned. Stretch, anything you need to do?
Yes. Yes.
I think that was your first, like, big class. How are things going?
Good work.
I want to mention at this time, these three slides that we just showed, those are actually graphics that Samantha and Annie in our communications department have put together, and they will continue to provide those each month as far as updates with some pictures and information as to the progress. And that can all be found on the Build 220 website. So really nice information and way to display that, I think, for our community. So moving on, the next group of schools, we've got Roslyn Road, Countryside, Sunny Hill, and Huff. At this time, we are nearing the end of the design phase for those four sites. And this fall, we will be bringing those projects to the next phase of going out to Next, we have Barrington High School. Barrington High School, as you recall, you know, we've given a few presentations along the way because it's over a year of design work. So we had a 60 slideshow presentation back in March that we provided. We've continued our work. We're nearing the end of that design phase, which will end at the end of October. Couple of things I want to make mention of. Steve and his team have been doing a great job at the high school of including our staff, our administrators, our coaches in the process. We've also started to engage parents and community members. Couple of new opportunities that are planned. Next week, during the high school parent-teacher organization meeting, this will be one of the topics that Steve's going to share to continue to get input and feedback from our parents. And then also, in conjunction with homecoming on October 2nd, during the morning breakfast and so forth, we'll offer another opportunity to parents and the community. We'll push this information out so it's available. But I want to note that those are some new opportunities that we have planned to, again, get more feedback to make sure that our designs reflect the direction we want to head with the high school. Okay? Next, we have this group of elementary schools and early learning centers. So Rose, North Barrington, Sister Schools grouped together, Lines Elementary. You'll notice that we are just about, you know, this year in January, going to enter the design phase. And I think that's important because this is a busy year. So starting in January, every single school and facility in the district will be in one of the three phases between design, bid, and build. We will be busy this year and looking forward to entering and starting the design at those four sites. All right. Also wanted to provide a quick update. The board will recall that, actually, that was the night that Dennis and Lance joined us for a presentation where we really walked through the principles of universal design and how that's helping inform our design plans. We then had a community meeting in May where we gathered more input from community members and parents with universal design in mind. And that meeting was really about big picture things like access, where walls should be, where doors should be. Well, we got that information. That helped inform our plans. Well, we took it one step further this summer and in late July, we then started to think about what's going on inside those spaces. And we looked at the furniture. So we had, for four days, Countryside hosted it, but we had an opportunity for students, parents, teachers, community members to stop by, look at different desks, look at different stools, seats, tables, teacher lecterns. I mean, we had a lot of different soft furniture seating. And so we took that information to, again, inform our design plans. And that was a very successful event. So I wanted to mention that, just more opportunities of how we've engaged our community.
So that sort of gets us to talking about the money. So where are we? So we, you know, so we've got a little thermometer on here. And so if we take a look at our first group of schools, we've committed $34 million on the two middle schools in Grove. So that's our total cost as to what we're looking at. So out of the 147, that would get us to that first piece. As we look at upcoming, in the very near future, bidding Countryside and Roslyn, so we've not committed those funds. So that increase that you just saw on there is actually reflecting what we're anticipating from a projected budget perspective on our total costs. And then for our next two, Sunny Hill and Huff, also will be bid then a little bit later this fall, we anticipate. So together, those seven schools will be about $59 million. So that's right about where we are. Now, obviously, we've got big things coming, and that's out of, this is out of the 147 million that we've got lined up. You know, when the high school goes out, we're probably, it's probably around a $60 million nut on the high school. So, you know, that's a much larger chunk that you'll see as we get out there. But, you know, as we share this with you in the future, it'll go from committed, you know, representing, that's what we've, you know, we've included combination of bid costs that, bids that have been awarded, as well as the other costs associated with it. Will be bid, so that's sort of a budget number. So that, as we get a little further along, you'll see Countryside and Roslyn, it'll be, here's the dollar amount that we've committed for that. So obviously, when the bits come in, those numbers adjust a little bit. So that's where we are. You know, right now, we're about $59 million lined up that we anticipate being committed by the time we get to the end of this year. So a couple of other things I want to talk with you about. You know, the fine arts addition is not within the referendum scope. So when the board was considering the total amount of the referendum, there was an amount that was allocated for doing some design work for that. Now, that design work hasn't started yet. We're actually anticipating that it's likely that during the '22, '23 school year, that process would kick off for that. And the board at the time was approving the referendum question, had indicated that it was likely that the board would go back to the community once that design work was done with the opportunity to ask for a referendum to approve construction of that. That's a decision for the board to make in the future on that, but I just wanted to remind you of that little bit of history. But that, doing that actual construction work is not within the scope of this referendum. As we have, the other point I want to make is, you know, as we've done in the past with referendum in the past, we have talked with community groups to support fundraising for items that are outside of the scope of the referendum. So right now, as we're looking at that, we, you know, we're starting some of those conversations. And it's the same kind of thing if the board does ask the community for a referendum with fine arts. And if a referendum is approved, we'd have those same kinds of conversations with fine art supporters. But we've got more information on conversations that have taken place. And I'm going to ask Dr. Winkelman to talk a little bit about the meeting that he has had with the Horseshoe Club to start some of those conversations around things that are not within our scope, but that there, that would be beneficial for our curricular programs and for our athletic programs to support the district and the community.
Thanks, Dave. So, you know, thinking about the projects at the high school, when I displayed that slide with the project timeline, you know, at the conclusion of this school year, we will start our first phase of construction at Barrington High School that'll continue then through February of 2025, right? But those first projects, we've designated that we're going to start with projects that are site work-related, basically everything north of the building itself. You may recall that from the presentation we gave in March, right? That's what we've decided to start. So it's going to be touching that varsity baseball field, the turf section between the baseball and the stadium, and then everything on the other side of the creek that consists of the Fields of Dreams property. That's where our first construction is going to take place. So knowing that we're starting there, we thought it was a good time to engage the Horseshoe Club, as they have, as Dave mentioned, participated in the past when we've done these type of spaces that they've been involved in partnering with us. And so we will complete all of the projects that were included in the referendum, but there are some decision points when you do design of how you may want to enhance, right? So an example, that would be a scoreboard. We are going to replace the scoreboards at Field of Dreams so that we have current working equipment. But there's a lot of options with scoreboards, right? Scoreboard's purpose is to convey information about the game, right? But you can go from that to having the player that's up to bats, number displayed, to a pitch count, to a video board. There's options. And that would be an example of, we're going to provide new scoreboards that will last and provide that function for our community for the years to come. However, it's a matter of, do we want to enhance that experience? And that would be an opportunity where maybe fundraising would come into play. Same, you know, concept with seating. There's a lot of different options with seating. We will provide the seating, but do you want metal or aluminum, bleacher, resin seat? There's a lot of options. So these are things we discussed at the Horseshoe Club meeting, plus their invited guests two Fridays ago, to just bring these concepts forward, see interest. Another topic that came up was about turf and the baseball turf. And, you know, we know that at one of the final board meetings, when the items were being determined that would be included in the $147 million referendum question, one of the last items discussed was, should the turf for the infield at the varsity baseball field be in or out? Those of you that were on the board or if you were watching the board meetings that time, we were kind of using that. And Dave had a spreadsheet where he was keeping track of items that were going to be in or out on that $147 million referendum question. Through our design work, we have determined that the infield turf could be included in the referendum projects at the high school starting next year. And we would still be able to meet those other expectations of what was identified in the referendum and be able to afford to do that. It also, you know, we are going to be, which is displayed on the slide here, touching that section of grass, which we call the multipurpose turf field, because we want to be able to activate that for our PE classes and our sports and activities and the community by putting in synthetic turf. It's an ideal time to take advantage of the fact that we're adding turf right adjacent to it. We would have, you know, the materials, the workers, it would be financially, you can leverage the ability of doing it at this time by looking at doing turf on the varsity baseball field. So we wanted to point that out and bring that as part of our presentations.
And a future decision to turf that would be more expensive because of that mobilization and some of the other, the other work and impact on the fields.
Do you want to discuss that now, or do you want to?
Yeah.
I was going to say, Dr. Winkelman.
Oh. That's awesome. So maybe we address that question first. I just had a couple of questions around that. So in the presentation that we received, I think it was in our board packet, it showed a lot of different enhancements, the canopies and the different kinds of seating and things like that. It was difficult to ascertain what was in and what was out, right, from that presentation? So do we feel like the varsity infield, turfing that is the highest priority of all of those other enhancements? Just want to triple check that.
Yeah, I would believe that to be the case. If you look back in terms of what was pulled off, the varsity baseball field was the last thing, I believe, in looking at the documents back, the last thing to be pulled off. Look from a educational benefit, both from physical education and then the athletic standpoint, I think it certainly carries the most opportunity to benefit kids and numbers of students.
And we'd be able to afford that because of some of the savings that have come in from the projects that are already underway?
So I think we're, yeah, under projected dollars thus far.
Okay.
Obviously, this is a long journey. That's part of the decision that you have to, you know, take into consideration. But I think we feel confident we can deliver on what was promised and include this piece.
And is the varsity field, are the one closest to the school?
Correct.
Yes.
To not in the Field of Dreams.
Right.
It's the one shown on the right-hand side here.
It's this one.
So it would just be the infield, not the entire field.
Right. To the left is the varsity baseball, or I'm sorry, varsity softball field, which is currently proposed as turf.
As part of the budget.
Correct.
So both fields will get turf.
Both fields, yeah.
And then the field that's shown next to varsity, that field in between, that's grass field now, that's shown there, that's turf also, correct?
Correct.
And then the tennis courts are shown relocated to there as well. So we would have some...
We're doing a tremendous amount of site work in that area, and this could be included in that work.
I'm not a turf specialist, but is it the exact same turf you'd use for a multipurpose field as you would for a baseball field, or it's a different?
No, likely not. You would use turf that was specific for applications on a baseball field design. So the activities would be consistent with that.
And our high school coaches, athletic director, and so forth, they've been able to provide that type of information during all these design meetings we've been having to specify the type of material and surfaces that they would be looking for or the different products on the market.
The softball turf be the same as the baseball turf, or that would be different also?
That's probably the same.
Probably about the same, okay.
And Sandra, you had raised the point of, there were other items. I gave a couple of examples tonight. I'm actually waiting for a response from Pepper of those items specifically and some costs associated with those different items that we shared with the Horseshoe Club, like the scoreboards and the seating area.
Shading sales. I got to be honest, I spent a lot of time at these fields. There's no shade. It's so hot.
Yep. That's another item we discussed that night that we think could be a benefit and add value to the experience.
Everything on that presentation that said enhancement was not dollars that were in the reference.
Correct. And to be clear, that was the presentation that was shared with the Horseshoe Club.
Right.
I didn't duplicate the whole presentation for tonight. I just tried to give some examples of things that we shared with them, but I can...
I'll just comment. The athletic director and some of the coaches came to talk to us about the fields. I don't know if everybody else was here on the board, Angela, I should know you were there. And they gave us some great data on, you know, why it's important to turf, you know, what you see here as well, how many injuries were caused due to just even practices on some of the grass fields that we have today. So just, that's one thing that stuck out in my mind when they came to talk to us a few years ago.
Well, in transitioning to more community use, I mean, the ability to have community access the fields because you're not worried about wear and tear and weather to protect for an upcoming week of games and events.
Yeah. And that's likely why you're considering the infield of baseball, because that's usually what causes baseball games to be, to be canceled and so forth. And so I'm sure there's going to be lots of improved drainage if we do turf as well. Because if anybody drives through there when it's raining...
You know it's bad.
It's a little scary.
What's the estimated cost to turf both fields, just out of curiosity?
It's $700,000 for the infield for baseball. And I don't want to quote the softball field without looking it up, because I haven't looked at that recently. But I can get that to you.
But that was within the numbers in the level one, I think, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
The turf for the softball field, what was removed at that last board meeting when we were determining the items was the infield turf for baseball.
Are there other fundraising sources besides the Horseshoe Club that we might be able to request?
We're putting together a comprehensive way to do this, so that will be through fundraising. It could also be through naming rights, and it could also be through advertising. Those would be other examples of ways that, and with things that we have done in the past in order to generate the funds in order to accomplish these enhancements.
As an example, the high school scoreboard was funded through sponsorship out of district funds. So if you weren't aware of that, we might be able to do something similar like that.
And we would follow the same policy and practices that prior boards have utilized because we have that spelled out of the process that we would use if we were to consider using those same things for naming rights and so forth for these spaces.
I don't know if this is a fair question, but thinking back to when we were deciding what would be in the referendum as a board that summer, how did the Field of Dreams, was the whole project in the first level? Because to me, the, like, how does the turf fit in with drainage, fit in with it being one whole project in softball, in the Field of Dreams area?
So the Field of Dreams and the items that were included were put together during, prior to referendum, if you recall, we were doing Blueprint 220.
Right.
And we had a master facility plan conducted. Those items were identified then, and they were brought forward and involved in the level one items at the high school. We never really called it out. If you go back to the line items, it was never specifically called out like the front atrium at the high school or like the varsity baseball field. It was always embedded within there. It never got pulled out in discussions with the board. So you won't find it in, like, any of those documents as a separate called-out line item, but it was, it was discussed. And I do recall some board meetings where that actual question was raised, where does Field of Dreams fit in? And it was in the level one items.
What was the thought process of it being in there? Do you remember? Because maybe that was before I was on the board.
For safety and security, we were looking not only at the bleachers and that there was potential to fall, I think maybe, it's like the freshman bleach, I can't remember what.
The varsity bleachers.
Safety and security. And then I think that just, you know...
The agent condition of the building, you're exactly right. The center building was compared to...
Yeah, that was the big thing, was the center building.
The center building, okay.
Thanks for bringing that up, Angela. That's exactly right.
Okay. Because I guess from building to the bleachers to the turf, I don't understand the progression to, of that, that it includes the turf.
That was one, the turf was included as one of the items that was identified in the master facility plan. Because of the safety and security nature, I think we called out those things, but there was a lot of detail, like, there's a lot of level one things that we're doing. Matter of fact, a lot of the money we're spending on a Field of Dreams is to correct some of the in-ground issues with plumbing and electric and things that cause our lights or our scoreboards and things not to work.
Okay.
So that's why it's kind of even at level one. I think that's why it never got pulled out, because it would be hard to say, of all these things identified in the master facility plan, we're going to pull certain little sections of that out. It was always just lumped together at safety and security because that's where it kind of resided. But we never pulled it separately.
Okay. That helps to understand how it, how it came together.
But the field conditions was part of the master facility plan because we knew we had concerns with those fields, that they needed work to them out there.
So all throughout there, I'm supportive of turfing the infield of the varsity baseball field. I think that makes a lot of sense. As you stated, it was one of the last things that didn't make the cut, so that should be the first thing that comes in. So I would be supportive of us adding turf to infield for varsity baseball. Do we have, is everybody else in concurrence there, or?
So we need a decision on this tonight.
I think we need some direction on it, for sure. I mean...
I don't have any problem with that. I just was talking to Dr. Hunt, though, and would like to review any partnership agreements that we have, you know, in that area to make sure that we...
I think we've got some due diligence that would have to, that could impact.
That'd be great.
And if it changes the direction, we'll certainly, you know, update the board. It's more of, do we want to spend the time going down this direction? To do that, due diligence at this point, I think we're looking for direction for. And I think our recommendation is, with the availability, with the staging, with everything in place, this makes sense because to come back, it's going to cost more money. But we've got some work to do to get to that point where it's, you know, we believe it's a, I think we all feel very good about it, but probably some items of due diligence to work through.
Awesome. Would you mind sharing, I bet you're doing your due diligence, would you mind sharing that contract with the board?
Sure.
That'd be great.
I guess, I guess the only concern I have is that we're early in the project of the whole referendum, and if we spend this money as our extra money, are we for sure going to be good at the end? That's my, you know, that we're not going to be like, oh, oh, we can't do this project at the end in a different order because we spent that money.
As you might imagine, that was certainly one of the questions that came to me right away was, what do you think, Dave? And then we had a variety of conversations around, do we believe that we can fulfill the obligations to the community and to the board of what the referendum projects if we take this on? And I would say that with a very, very high level of confidence, we believe that we can deliver on everything and still get this project in.
Any other, I've got a couple of questions, not related to the baseball field, but is there any other, do we, with getting the data on the partnerships, is there anyone else that, let me ask it this way, is there anybody opposed to us moving forward with turfing the infield of the varsity baseball field?
I just want to clarify, again, this is to continue a due diligence process, not necessarily committing fully, right?
Correct. We'll go out to bid and, you know, all of that, but I think...
I mean, with all of this, you hold final authority until you approve a bid.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
But I would not send us administration down a road if you were not comfortable with I mean, if there's, if there's due diligence that comes back that creates a red flag for all of us, yeah.
Do we want to bring it back in two weeks? Do you need to have, I guess that was, the question was asked earlier, we need to know it tonight, or can we reconfirm in two weeks? It sounds like you've got some hesitation. People want to have, ask some more questions.
I would like definitive costs. I think, I heard 700 grand for the baseball field, and we still need to get the softball fields validated, correct? Or not validated, but you need to look it up.
The cost for the softball fields already is included in the other work that was part of the referendum, so that's not an above and beyond cost.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's included. I just didn't want to quote the number because it's something we had talked about a few weeks ago that I don't want to misspeak, but Dave's absolutely right. The cost for the softball turf is already in the number that we were working with from the master facility plan and identifying that as a...
Understood. Thank you.
So it's really the extra cost is this conversation about the infield for baseball, which was taken off that question when it was posed.
The 700,000 is coming from some, like, kind of some overage that we have to, like, what's funding, what fund does it come from?
Overage in availability, underage in cost, yeah. Yeah, off of savings that we had.
Off of savings. Okay, so, so lower than anticipated costs on other projects that we had already committed to.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, it's a little less than half of what the board took off of the referendum. I hear the referendum was like 1.7 or something like that, in that range. So we're not adding everything back in, we're only adding in what we think we can afford.
Actually, the number that was taken off at that time, the cost was estimated at $541,000.
In change, yeah.
Okay, in change. But we had Pepper give us a new estimate of what it would cost today, and it was an estimate of 700,000. I mean...
Dave, do we know how much in savings we're looking at in terms, like, for now? I think that we're pulling that from. So the 700,000 comes from about how much in...
Well, we talked about that with the board when we were looking at our middle school bids. If you might remember, middle school bids came in very favorable. So, you know, so we were looking at a, you know, a few million dollars under what our projected cost was. And the, you know, the challenge, you know, which is really, I think, sort of the question that Leah was posing earlier as well, is, well, what's going to happen as this plays out? And we know just as bids have come in under, some bids can come in over.
Right. So do we have enough to compensate?
Right. And that was part of our internal conversations that we had at length on, do we think that we can do this? Is this doable? Now, you know, as your business manager, I'll tell you, I am both in my professional capacity, working for you, as well as by nature, conservative. So I am not excited about, you know, having any additional cost laid in, you know, until we're at the final throes of the process. But that being said, you have to layer in a level of reasonableness and appropriateness in trying to make the right decisions on behalf of the board and the community. So in this case, as we talked about it, I believe that we are still protected from some bids that may come in in the future. If they come in higher than what were anticipated, we still have sufficient, reasonable, actually even larger than reasonable, sufficient amount of money that would be available to help cover any of those overages. Now, we can't guarantee that until, you know, until we get out into probably early '25 that we will guarantee exactly when everything is done and what the final costs are. That being said, I believe we're in an appropriate spot, that this is a very prudent investment to deliver the right kind of enhanced curricular programming, provide for our athletics program and our community, be able to use our fields and our resources, and do it in a cost-effective manner and not jeopardize the other work that we have in place.
I think it's also important to note is that every piece of the project had some contingency built into it as well. So not only do we have some underage in our spend so far, but we also do still have contingency in every aspect.
That, right. And that may release and make additional funds available as well. That's correct. Yeah, great point. Thank you.
Is that 50% contingency that I saw in the previous presentation pretty consistent across the board, or does it vary based on project?
No, so we have a 5% design contingency and a 5% construction contingency built in on our projects.
Five, okay.
It's total of 10, but it's broken up into two pieces.
Oh, I see.
So, which is a similar number to what we use on all our summer projects. So, you know, as you see that coming forward, well, there will also be adding a 10% contingency on. That is the number that we use. In some cases, we use all of that or a little more. In some cases, we use very little or none. And that just varies by... And, and that just varies by, you know, project by project.
By approving this as a board, are we losing the opportunity to use fundraising to do the, do this project then? Are we?
I think the fundraising would, well, right, so we wouldn't be looking for fundraising for this, for the infield.
We'll take this one off the list of wishes.
Yes, but there would be other projects.
But there are enhancements.
Canopies and enhanced seating and the entranceway and scoreboard enhancements.
There's a list of items that were identified as enhancements.
No, we, I saw in the presentation.
So those would be the ones that we would be looking.
But this was also one of those at, at your presentation, so, okay.
So for the four of you veteran board members, you feel like this is the most important thing to bring back that was taken off when you were deciding what to, what would go in the referendum? Would you agree with this?
Well, I wouldn't say that, I mean, boy, that, that art center was something that we really didn't want to give up. But that's the thing, we want money. I mean, it's not that we have this kind of built in.
I guess in terms of feasibility, right, with, with costs.
Right, I mean, it's the last thing that we discussed taking off.
Oh, it was the very last thing that came off, okay, I see.
That's my recollection.
Okay.
I mean, the goal was to get the price down so that the board could universally unanimously say, yes, we support this. And there were some members of the board that really wanted to cut, cut, cut. And this is where we said, all right, if we take this out, can we bring this to the, you know, community? And it was, yes, we can do that. So this was the last thing we took out to get down to the number that people felt comfortable with.
So it would be, it would make sense to be the first thing back in, in other words. Thank you.
Kind of because the amount that it was to conveniently matched, cutting it matched the number.
Oh, I see.
So, so both.
So are we good to have the administration move forward?
Yeah.
I will get the additional information as requested, for sure.
And if there's other things you want, please just let, let us know.
Got it.
So I have a couple of other questions, if you remember. So since you brought up fine arts, one, one concern I had when you were presenting is that if we don't get to the fine art design until the year 2022, you know, one of the reasons we put in the, I think it was several hundred thousand dollars to do the design was so that we could show the community what we were thinking about because some of the feedback we got, one of the reasons we pulled it off was because the perception was we were building more than we maybe have needed. So I know we've got a lot going on this year, but I just want to make sure to remind us that one of the reasons we put in that design work is so that we could show the community. So I don't think we want to go back and ask for money again until we're able to show. So if we don't look at it till 2022, then that means it'll be even lighter than that, that we could even go back to the community and ask for dollars. So I just want to make sure I'm calculating that correctly and.
And that might be a broader conversation to come back around. I think that's our initial thinking. I think the full board would want to have a conversation about, when does it make sense to even consider going back to the community and back it off of there? So, I mean, that, that may be a broader conversation.
Well, it's also a good thing to possibly talk about with strategic plan, you know? And so to have a visual would be helpful. You know, that's not happening immediately, but that's coming up.
Yeah.
So I would agree with Sandra, that sooner it might be better, but I hate to overburden everyone.
I know it was a painful thing for many of us to take off.
But it's, it's a capacity issue too. I mean, if you look at all of the design, we're trying to go through the people that are engaged in that to put that on top. I just think we need to think, we need to think through that.
Well, this is our first update in a long time, so we're just asking everything. Come on, ruin it over the wall.
More updates.
Come on, we want to see everything. Sorry.
So I think I, I heard you slip in there pancake breakfast, so we're on for the pancake breakfast for homecoming? That's exciting, yes.
Steve said, so it's official. Even if he's slipping the pancakes.
Awesome, that's, that's, that's. 50, 50 years this year? Oh, my gosh. Let me get emotional. One other thing, on Grove, is there an opportunity for us to go and see Grove? Or could there be?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That would be great.
Why don't we, why don't we talk about putting some opportunities together for board members to come see some of the work that's been done? I, I think that'd be great for you and I think people love to see in buildings too, so why don't we work something on?
Some kind of community celebration along these milestones or something would be, if we can, if we can. We couldn't do anything last year, it was all Zoom, so whatever makes sense, it's reasonable.
That'd be great.
Craig writing the steel beam in.
Nicole maybe.
Nicole, you're right.
Okay, I have one more question. On the timeline, I think it was slide, I don't know, what are the first timelines? Maybe slide 11? No, up earlier with the station and on the first timeline that was shown. So just in case community members are looking at this, we are still planning to have students in the new building in the fall of 2022?
Yeah, I'm really glad you pointed that out. I should have mentioned that.
Oh, wow.
So it does show November of '22, but we believe that it'll be substantially complete and kids will be back in the building. But there may be punch item, you know, things that still need some work, but it's not going to prevent kids from being back in the classroom. That's absolutely right. So that's why it says November because we may be addressing some of those items. But yes, the intent is to bring our students back in next fall.
You may want to just add that to that slide so that we don't, nobody misinterprets what that means.
Would that be Grove Avenue also or no, just the two middle schools?
My comments were for the two middle schools. As you see, it's December for Grove, so we have not had that discussion, but we can certainly talk about that at the next referendum construction steering committee in greater detail of those months next fall of what that may look like. We just haven't had that discussion, but we did talk about the middle schools. Yes, I'm really glad you brought that up.
Thank you.
Is it? Okay.
That's a genius bar?
Yeah.
I think that addresses all of my questions. Is there any, anything else anybody else had?
Okay, thank you for the.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're still getting me, I'm still up here.
Yeah, so our last discussion item is first reading of board policies. We had how many, about nine? Yeah, they did not look too complicated. Is there an overall summary you could give or?
Give me one second.
Sure.
There isn't a ton of. I mean, even though we've called them major, they are like totally working or.
That looked pretty straightforward to me. Is there anyone in particular people want to talk through? It'd be 2130, do you want to talk about that one, Angela?
About 2.240.
I, I would suggest that if we were to talk about any of them, I would suggest 2:240 Board Policy Development. That's probably the policy, we had some discussion in policy committee surrounding this one. So if everyone takes a look at that, this policy, the content that would be added to this policy is around words importing gender and looking to have throughout our policy manual, words importing the masculine and our feminine gender, including all gender neutral inclusive pronouns. So for instance, instead of his or her, we would use gender neutral pronouns. Or if you look at, as an example, one of the first applications of that that our committee reviewed is policy 2:130. As, you know, that policy reads in the first sentence, the Board of Education directs through policy, the superintendent in his or her charge, we would change that. Our committee suggests saying, the superintendent's charge, rather than actually using the his or her wording. So we had some discussion around that fitting with some of our conversations right now of looking at ways to improve policies that fit this type of criteria.
So even though 2240, the importing words gender is something that came from press, we applied it in this example on our.
I think there was a note, was it on that same policy, 2240, that said, that as the policies come up for review, either through our own internal review five-year process or because there needs to be new updates to a policy, then we would implement these changes rather than just like go through the entire policy manual right now and try to like catch every single usage.
That was a lot of work with Angela.
Yeah, yeah. I don't want to go through that again.
Yeah.
So you're just going to take it as it goes. I mean, I, I guess, you know, worst case scenario, there may be some policies that we don't see for five years and, you know, there may be something that, you know, won't be changed until then. But, you know, there's so many updates that are coming down from press right now that we're, I think the rotation is going to increase significantly. So I do think that we're going to, to have our hands on a lot of policies this school year. So I think a lot of the updates are going to be made on a pretty timely basis.
Agreed. You know, another way that we will look at these, and I don't want to steal Nate's thunder, a whole meeting ahead of him coming and giving an update, but don't forget, we also have one of the subgroups for our district equity team is, is, is on policy. And so they will also be looking at policies periodically and will bring that to our, our policy committee to look at. So there are going to be a lot of different ways that we'll have eyes on these. If we were to adopt this approach, that then as policies come forward, we'll look at it through that lens of making sure it fits with this intent.
And that timeline can always be accelerated if it was, you know, felt necessary or appropriate.
Yeah. So I think, so for example, 2:130, so we changed his or her the first time. So we said the superintendent's charge, but like the second sentence, it still says, and holds him or her responsible. So we would, for instance, under this new adoptive policy, that would be, and holds that person responsible, right? So we would make a tweak like that.
Yep.
You see that one in the second sentence?
I do, I do.
Wow, right there. So do we want to change, make that change now?
Yeah. Yes, it's, it's, we could.
Yes.
Include it and then I'll put that in as a change for second reading.
We say, so what are you changing to, holds that person?
Holds that person responsible.
Should we just repeat superintendent? And holds the superintendent responsible?
Evaluates the superintendent and holds his.
After every five years, I just reuse it him for now, but.
Is the superintendent responsible for the operation?
Is that okay?
That works too, sure.
Sure.
As mentioned, many of the other policies, it was not a substantial amount of content changes. A lot of them are also legally required. So we're making the updates so that we are in alignment with any new changes that have happened.
So is everybody okay if we move forward all the policies that were presented for second reading? Or do we need to talk about any others individually? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Sounds like we can forward it all, great, thank you, good work, policy.
Yeah, lots of hard work.
Yeah. So next up, trying to keep close to our 10 o'clock here, are the agenda items for September 21st, our next meeting, which is a little bit less than two weeks from now. Is, is there nothing or is there something that we already have out there?
So I think we need a, I'm not sure if it's a resolution or a motion, Dave, about transfer of funds from operating funds to capital project funds.
Yes, yes, that's correct. We will need a fund transfer item, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and we also have the action for the second reading of the board policies that we just, that we just did. Adoption of the budget, 2021, 2022 budget. The easement agreement that we, and the, an action on the insurance change that we have reviewed in our packets as well. Then we have the discussion that we've talked about for equity, race and culture diversity update. Also additional policies. Oh, the policy for public comment, remember we were going to have a discussion on that? So is everybody okay with us having, having that on our agenda?
Yes. This is public comment, not the minutes.
It's related to the minutes question.
It's related to the minutes.
Oh, okay, so both.
And we will redistribute that opinion just so it's fresh for you to review. Craig, are we?
Word protocols too.
Word protocols?
The law enforcement agreements.
I do believe those will be ready.
Okay.
Okay.
And word protocols as well?
I thought there was something else that came up earlier.
Oh, the, the auto-generated, is that, is that a discussion item or is that, that's just something that will approve?
I think that would be in the.
With the emails?
I think we were actually adding that to protocols, so.
Yes.
We'll work on the wording of it.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Yeah.
I know what I was thinking about, I was thinking about the transportation. You're going to get to us on when we might want to have an update on transportation.
We'll have a conversation.
I just want to make sure that.
You have a very full meeting.
Yes, we do. I'm not suggesting it has to go here, I just wanted to remember, was trying to remember what we talked about earlier in the meeting and that was it.
So one thing that I, I don't know if the board would want to talk about this. I mentioned this to Dr. Hunt. I haven't had a chance to talk to any of you guys about it though, but definitely not this coming meeting and probably not for a couple. But, you know, looking at the, the information reports today, we can see that there was another decrease as far as the number of kids that are enrolled in the district. I think it was down like 1/20 or something like that. And I can't remember what the decrease in enrollment was last year. I think it was around 500 or something.
It was a bigger number.
It was a bigger number. And, you know, I think that, again, I won't use the word survey, questionnaire. You know, to reach out to those families that have left the district at, at some point in the future, you know, like in the next couple of months and just ask them, you know, a very short questionnaire that's, you know, why did you leave? And then for, you know, let's learn. I mean, I, I would, I would think if we could ask, you know, what did, what do you see in your new district that District 220 does better? And what do you see in your new districts that you'd like to see District 220 improve on?
In your new school? They're not, they're not moving districts right there.
Or maybe some people have moved too, you never know. But, you know, I think that it would benefit us. I mean, you know, certainly it's good to hear what we're doing great and what we need work with. But also, you know, I think that it would show these families that we are committed to bringing them back if they did just, you know, choose another option and, you know, maybe build a little bit more goodwill with our community. So, you know, I don't know if it's something that we would need to discuss or maybe something we would just want to implement and, and look at the results. But I bet people would participate, you know? I think that, that, you know, whether you send your kid to a private school or not, if you live in this district, you definitely want this school district to be the best in the state. And, and I think there's a lot of pride and, and love for this, this, you know, district. So, I don't know, just something I thought of.
Let me talk about that through with exec. I, I know there's districts and worked in districts that had, it's part of withdrawal process. You solicit that feedback. So maybe that's a broader conversation for the withdrawal process as well.
But I think that if it's just when they withdraw, we don't really get the benefit of hearing what they, you know, like a comparative study with where they're going now. I mean, I think it, it's nice to do a little follow-up a few months after.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're, you know, certainly due to COVID and due to recent, you know, there's, there's value in that information. But then looking at it long-term, having a system in place that constantly is reviewing that information is also something we should consider and talk about.
Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah. Yeah, I just thought.
So maybe you give us, I don't know, I think we need to add it to the next.
No, I'd say this is a few months, or at least a month.
This isn't an ad, but you know how Beth mentioned that Hanover SEL survey is going to come out tomorrow? I think that, I'm sure Samantha will do a great job pushing it, but I think it would be worthwhile for us in our own networks to encourage people to fill it out because I think that data is going to be really important. And then it may also connect people with, you know, and students, kids, families with. connect people with, you know, and students, kids, families with any kind of additional services that they need. So I think the link is at, it's two weeks, right?
Yeah, make sure people go to the email that Samantha sent.
Right, yes. We'll point them to that.
Okay. Anything else? Do we have a motion to, sorry, say it right, consideration to approve the confidential closed session minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Katie Carum. Sandra Bradford. Yes. Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Very ulterior.
Yes.
And how about a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Well, actually, I think we started about five.